All right. Good evening. It is 6:00 PM. And I am going to call this evening's Planning Commission meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chair Maria Villia?
Here.
This evening, Vice Chair Berlin is absent. Commissioner Buchanan?
Here.
Commissioner Roof?
Here.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Here.
Great. Our next item is our flag salute. Commissioner Roof, could you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Our next item is our agenda review. Would any of our commissioners like to revise the order of agenda items this evening?
Um, can I be a little bit out of norm and just get a show of hands? Who's here for the cell power? Okay, I had a feeling. So if possible, commissioners, can we swap 8C with 8A?
I think it's by consensus. So as long as...
That's, I think that would be good for the people in the room.
It's, that works for me. That's fine with me. Okay, so we'll move 8C, switch 8C and 8A, I think was...
That's what I was gonna ask.
Was that what you were suggesting, Commissioner Sakerson?
So A will go last?
Correct. Does that work with you guys?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so 8C and 8A, we are swapping on this agenda. The next item is our community comments and suggestions. This is a public comment period, which allows members of the community to present issues, thoughts, or suggestions on matters that are not scheduled on this agenda. So if you're speaking for an agenda item, wait until that agenda item. Members of the public can provide public comment remotely by using the raise hand feature on Zoom. So if you are on Zoom, you can raise your hand. But if there is anyone in the room that has public comment for any items that are not on the agenda tonight and that are in the purview of the Planning Commission, now would be the time. Please come up. I don't actually, I think it would depend on what it's about with the library. If it's like a land use issue, that would probably be more for the city council. Sorry about that. Okay, so I don't think there's any other public comment tonight here in the room. Is there any public comment on Zoom for any item not on the agenda this evening?
If any member of the public on Zoom would like to speak, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Great. Thank you so much. So with that, I will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to written communications. I know we received at least one email today with several communications on it. Was there anything else introduced after that?
So we have one supplemental memo regarding item 8A and one for item 8C.
Okay.
And then just before the start of tonight's meeting, we also received some additional correspondence that'll be provided to the Planning Commission during that.
Great. Thank you so much. Moving on to our consent agenda, item 7A is our approval of minutes. Do I have any questions or comments from commissioners about item 7A? No. Do I have any public comment on item 7A on our consent agenda? None in the room? Okay, do I have any online?
If any member of the public on Zoom would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Thank you so much. I'll close public comment on that item and look for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as included in the packet.
Okay. Second, thank you. Can I have a vote, please?
Sorry, I missed the motion.
We motioned to approve the minutes.
Approve the minutes.
Okay. And so is that Commissioner Roof that?
Yeah, Commissioner Roof and then Commissioner Sakerson.
And then Commissioner Sakerson?
Second.
Commissioner Buchanan? Yes, Chair Maria Villia.
Yes. All right, motion passed, and we'll move on to public hearings. And since we switched it, we will now be, we'll be hearing 8C first, which is consideration of CUP 23-006, which is a new 55-foot wireless telecommunications facility, and finding that this action is exempt from review under CEQA pursuant to State Guidelines Section 15303. Do we have a report on this item?
Before we go on, I just wanted to say that my parents' home is located 80 feet from the proposed 55-foot cellphone tower. And even though I don't support them financially or have financial interest in the property, I was made aware that it is a conflict, common law conflict of interest by the city attorney, and that I should recuse myself from this item. So I'm gonna do that this time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Listening.
Thank you. We'll, we'll get you when we're done. Thank you. Okay. Staff report.
Thank you. My name is Brian Pedradde, Community Development Director for the City of Arroyo Grande. Tonight, we have a conditional use permit for a new cell site. Okay. Let me pull this closer. Oh, I can't. I'll just go closer. There we go. All right, Brian Pedradde, Community Development Director for the city. Tonight, we have Shayna Groban, who's our assistant planner, is gonna do the presentation. We also have Bennett Givens, who is our, working for, as our city attorney tonight, who will give a secondary presentation as well, talking about state and federal constraints. And with that, I will move it to Shayna, and she'll provide the initial presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, planning commissioners. Today, I have for you the consideration of conditional use permit 23-006, a new 55-foot wireless cell site. The proposed location is at 789 Valley Road, which is at the corner of Valley Road and Sunrise Terrace. The subject property is a previously developed parking lot, which is located in the office mixed-use zoning district. And there is a commercial property to the north of the subject site, a mixed-use property that includes both residential and commercial uses to the south, a mobile home park to the east, and agricultural uses to the west of the subject property. I've provided some more street-level images that depict the project site as seen from Valley Road, which you can see the green cloth-lined facility to allow for better orientation and to provide a little bit more context. This image shows the approximate location, and the size is approximate as well, of the proposed lease area. You can see that the entirety of the parcel is paved for parking, with about one quarter being sectioned off with a green cloth-lined fence that has been used for, for overflow parking and storage. That's what it's currently used for. All right, so the project consists of the construction, operation, and maintenance of a new wireless telecommunications facility at 789 Valley Road. The intent of the project is to meet capacity demands. The applicant proposes the installation of a new stealth wireless communications facility to be completely concealed within a new 55-foot faux water tower, which again will be contained within a 540-square-foot lease area, which will be contained within a chain-link fence. The proposal does also include a new 30-kilowatt diesel generator with a 210-gallon tank. So this site plan demonstrates some important features of the proposed project site. So you can see details regarding the lease area. You have property gates, driveways, parking lots, and the adjacent site to the proposed lease area. Give you all a second to look at that. All right, on to project specifics. So per the project description, the tower will reach a maximum height of 55 feet, with the antenna inside the tank reaching a tip height of 53 feet. The top of the platform is a height of 45 feet, and the base of the tower will be 10 feet in diameter, with four beams supporting a cylindrical faux wooden tank. The tank exterior will have a rustic appearance with faux wood paneling. A little bit more project specifics. The facility will consist of three sectors of two antennas each, along with six remote radio units mounted adjacent to the antennas. The associated equipment cabinets will be placed at the base of the pole within the 540-foot square-foot lease area. The lease area will be surrounded by a new eight-foot-tall chain-link fence enclosure. And there will also be, as part of this proposal, four downward-turned service lights, as well as a NOX box, which will be for emergency access within the enclosure. This is an overhead view of the lease area. This image demonstrates the location of the lights, the PG&E transformer, the 30-kilowatt diesel generator, and the three equipment cabinets. The service lights are to be activated only via manual light-switch timer, which can only be accessed by authorized personnel during maintenance activities. Otherwise, it will be dark. The generator is used during emergencies only, which is in accordance with our municipal code section 9-16.030, section B. All right. So the telecommunications citing requirements do require photo mockups or digital computer representations of the project site to be provided as part of submittal. So the following rendings were submitted to demonstrate the proposed project from multiple vantage points, which is illustrated with an index map and key for identification, which you can see at the bottom left of each image. So image one on the left demonstrates the tower looking northeast from Valley Road. Image two demonstrates the tower looking southeast from Valley Road, which is at the entrance of the Sunrise Terrace Mobile Home Park. I'll give you a second to look at those. All right, image three. Image three demonstrates the tower looking northwest from Tiger Tail Drive. And image four on the right demonstrates the tower looking southwest from Sunrise Terrace. All right, as I stated earlier, this project is subject to the telecommunications requirements as published by the City of Arroyo Grande in 2017. The telecommunications requirements specify that colocation is encouraged to reduce the overall number of freestanding facilities. However, due to infeasibility of colocation, the applicant proposes to conceal the equipment and associated antennas within the faux water tank. Innovative design, innovative design is defined as structures compatible with surrounding architecture or replicating natural environmental features, and they are encouraged by the telecommunications requirements. And the applicant has not proposed landscaping due to the project site's lack of existing irrigation. However, the base of the equipment will be within the new chain-link fence, and as I stated, antennas will be enclosed completely within the water tower. The telecommunications citing requirements further call for information regarding existing towers of the same or similar design located within 10 miles of Arroyo Grande. As no such facilities exist, these examples are from the greater San Luis Obispo County. The first example on the left is from Farm Supply at 828 Old Windmill Lane in San Luis Obispo. And the second image is from Home Depot, also in San Luis Obispo, at 1551 Froome Ranch Way. The applicant has provided a radio frequency electromagnetic fields exposure report, which I will now be referring to as the RF report for brevity, to demonstrate compliance with the Federal Communications Commission Radio Frequency Safety Guidelines. The FCC regulations for MPE limits for field strength and power density for the transmitters operating at frequencies 300 kilohertz to 100 gigahertz. And this maximum refers to the peak electric and magnetic field strength associated with these fields, to which a person may be exposed without harmful effect. I will now present three figures from the RF report demonstrated, demonstrating projected exposure rates at three different elevations. This figure represents projected exposure at the antenna level. So that is an elevation of 47 feet in the air. Areas subject to emissions greater than those allowed by the FCC are located within 90 feet from the front face of the antennas at an elevation of 47 feet in the air. No habitable space is located in the areas where the RF emissions exceed FCC limits. This figure represents the projected exposure at an elevation of 14 feet in order to simulate the projected exposure on the rooftops of surrounding structures, the project, surrounding structures of the project site. There are currently no buildings that would lead to overexposure for those working on roofs at this height. And finally, we have this final figure, which represents the projected exposure levels at the ground elevation. The RF report concludes that the anticipated calculations for the proposed site resulted in exposure levels that are below the FCC's most stringent general population MPE limits. As a part of the telecommunications citing requirements, there is a requirement for the applicant to provide an explanation of site selection and the reason that the site was, that the site was selected over alternative candidates. Some of the factors that were considered include topography, RF propagation, elevation, height, utilities, access, and interested property owners. The applicant determined that there were no viable candidates for colocation within the search radius. And four sites were considered by the applicant. The current project site was chosen because it met the search criteria, and the property owner expressed interest. All right. The project proposal is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under the Class III exemption. The Class III exemption applies to the construction and location of limited numbers of new small facilities or structures. The proposed project is a new small facility in an already-developed area and is comparable in scope and function to those structures identified in the state exemption. It is recommended, based on this information, that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving conditional use permit CUP 23-006, and find that this action is exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15303.
So I think, sorry, Brian Pedradde again. I think we'll move over to Bennett, who also has a presentation as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, Bennett, we're just getting you.
Sorry, Bennett, we're just getting you. PowerPoint loaded, so just give us a second.
Oh, he's on Zoom. Okay.
Yeah, I'm appearing by Zoom.
All right, so we've got your presentation on the screen now, Bennett, and you're welcome to get started.
Perfect. Patrick, I'll just let you know when to change slides. Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Bennett Givens. I'm a telecommunications associate at Bass, Bass &amp; Krieger. I've been assisting staff in its review of this application, and this evening I'll be available to answer questions by the commission. And in advance, I'd like to have, provide a quick PowerPoint presentation discussing the limitations under state and federal law the city's authority with regard to wireless facilities. Next slide, please. One more, please. So this slide has the high level of what takeaways on the national level, policies for wireless facilities. And generally, I think if there's any one page to remember about the city's authority, it's contained on this page. Generally speaking, no local decision or regulation can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of personal wireless services. That includes the cell sites and, and related facilities. The FCC is the sole authority for setting RF emission safety standards. Localities such as a city cannot regulate the placement of wireless facilities based on RF emissions. The city must act in a timely manner to process and reach a final decision on a wireless application. There are a number of FCC shot clocks for action. They are generally between 60 days and 150 days. If the city does not reach a final decision within these FCC shot clocks, the application is deemed approved, and the applicant can go construct their facility. No, any additional action by the city is not required. The city must provide all denials in writing, based on substantial evidence in the record, and must deliver a denial as soon as practicable after making a final decision. The city cannot unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. The wireless applications and wireless industry are afforded expedited appeals in court to reach a speedier solution and final decision on an application. And there are certain modifications to an existing wireless facility qualifying as an eligible facilities request that must be approved, and the city has no discretion to deny it. And again, there's a deemed approved remedy for that as well. Next slide. Here is the general legal framework on the federal side. You'll note that there's substantial federal preemption of the city's authority with regard to citing wireless facilities. The principal act is the Telecommunications Act of 1996. There are two sections in particular, 332 and 253, which provide that no local or state regulation or decisions on a wireless application can prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the ability of any entity to provide personal wireless services or telecommunications services. There is a general preservation of local authority to control the placement of personal wireless facilities subject to substantive and procedural limits. In addition, in 2012, we had the Middle Class Tax Relief Act that enacted Section 6409, or what we call eligible facilities requests. These are the modifications to an existing facility I mentioned earlier that the city has no discretion and must approve. In addition, the FCC, or the Federal Communications Commission, has adopted a number of regulations, orders, and declaratory rulings that carry the force of law and refine the federal legislation you see before you. In 2018, we had a moratorium ban under the FCC order. Essentially, the city cannot ban wireless facilities or prohibit the provision of wireless services. This also includes placing limits on the number of facilities in the city. Next slide, please. This is a summary sheet of the wireless shot clocks. Under Section 332 of the Telecommunications Act, local entities such as a city must reach the, a final decision on a wireless application within a reasonable period of time. The FCC has interpreted this reasonable period of time as the shot clocks you see before you, which range from 60 days to 150 days. The application that you, we are considering this evening falls in the other category, subject to 150-day shot clock. The, one, one last note on that last slide, thank you. As you'll note, there's a deemed approved remedy for every single wireless facility application type and shot clock. Most recently, the state legislature in California adopted AB 357, which expanded the deemed granted remedies, so, which left us with the net effect that all wireless application types have a deemed approved remedy if the city misses the shot clock. Next slide, please. There's also a very stringent process for reviewing wireless applications and requesting missing information. This is an avenue for the city to toll the shot clock and essentially receive additional time to complete its review if an application is submitted and it is incomplete. Next slide. As I mentioned, there are certain modifications to existing facilities known as eligible facilities requests that the city has no discretion and must approve. There's been three recent orders interpreting this section from the Middle Class Tax and Relief Act. 2015, the FCC adopted its implementation order, essentially setting forth the general rules and criteria for deciding whether a modification qualifies for this expedited process. The 2020 clarifications order addresses a number of items and seeks clarification on how these criteria are applied. One of which, important for tonight's discussion, is the preservation of concealment elements. This is essentially, when a wireless facility is modified later, once initially installed, there's only certain requirements that a wireless, if wireless provider or applicant needs to follow, so long as their application qualifies an eligible facilities request. There's a limitation on whether or not existing elements that go towards concealment must be followed in subsequent modifications. The 2020 clarifications order limited such concealment elements that must be preserved as only those that go towards stealth, such as ensuring that the facility looks like something different, something other than a wireless facility. Here, the proposed facility is technically a stealth facility due to the, a reasonable person looking at the facility would not know immediately that it is a wireless facility. All of the antennas and transmission equipment, wires and lines are concealed within the top enclosure, the faux water tank. And that limitation requiring complete concealment would be able and be preserved through subsequent modifications, even if those modifications qualify as an eligible facilities request. In addition, the 2020 expansion order also broadened the scope of what qualifies an eligible facilities request to include certain excavations out of this existing site. Next slide, please. This is also particularly important for tonight's discussion. RF emissions and the FCC's sole authority for setting and determining compliance with its standards. The 330, Section 332 of the Telecommunications Act provides that no state or local government may regulate the placement, construction, modification of personal wireless services, facilities on the basis of environmental effects of RF emissions to the extent that these facilities comply with the FCC standards. Next slide, please. In addition, direct or indirect concerns over the perceived health effects of RF emissions may not serve as substantial evidence to support the denial. to support the denial of an application where an applicant has demonstrated compliance with the FCC standards. Here, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with its RF report. And uh, any direct or incorrect concerns over the perceived health effects of RF emissions would not serve as substantial evidence to support a denial. Further, such concerns related to RF emissions would not um concerning uh result or concerning uh dimin- diminishment of property values um would also not constitute uh substantial evidence to support a denial. Uh, next slide please. In addition, RF emissions due to recent case law uh is often claimed uh as by opponents of wireless facilities that the um American Disabilities Act prohibits or must uh that public entities must accommodate um those with hypersensitivities to electromagnetic uh radiation or RF emissions. Uh, recent this recent case and among others has shown that um under the ADA uh, a hypersensitivity to RF emissions uh is not a basis for accommodation and uh that a general requirement that so so long as the RF emissions uh meet the FCC standards that um no accommodation would be necessary. Uh, next slide please. In addition, uh, there's some other uh regulations concerning small wireless facilities. These are generally small facilities that are deployed in the right of way, uh typically in connection with the expansion of five G coverage. Uh, there are a number of special rules for these facilities to accelerate their deployment and also limit what fees the city can charge for uh deployment on city-owned infrastructure and and uh their presence in the right of way. Uh, next slide please. There are also aesthetic uh limits to the aesthetic requirements that a city can place on small wireless facilities. Um, we were in uh involved in these uh in this litigation at the Ninth Circuit in the City of Portland, the United States, um, which actually struck down uh several of the requirements uh. So now, under existing law, uh, any aesthetic requirements related to small wireless facilities need only be reasonable and published in advance. Next slide please. Uh, state law, uh, it also is involved as well to preempt uh some of the city's authority. Um, generally, the uh state law is appears in providing uh deemed approved remedies uh for all the shot clocks except the uh EFR shot clock or eligible facilities request shot clock, which already has a federal deemed approved remedy. Um, there's also limitations on how long a wireless permit may be issued for. Um, it cannot be issued for a period less than ten years. Uh, you cannot require ESCO deposits for removal of a facility. And you cannot require that all facilities be located on sites owned by particular parties. Um, this was pretty popular early on where certain jurisdictions thought that they could make revenue by requiring uh wireless facilities be deployed on certain uh publicly owned uh sites. Um, state law also recognizes the federal uh authority over RF emissions as well. Uh, next slide please. Um, in regards to fees, state law uh requires that all fees for uh review of applications on the regulatory side uh must be cost-based. There's no revenue generation that can be had through uh the review of wireless facility applications. Next slide please. And in addition, uh, it's not relevant here, but there's also limitations on uh the city's authority with regard to wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. Generally, um, wireless companies are considered telephone corporations under the Public Utilities Code. And they have are subject to a statewide franchise to deploy in the public right-of-way without paying additional compensation to the city. Uh, next slide. And that concludes my presentation. Um, I'll be available to answer questions uh from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Givens. I think that concludes the staff report then. Okay. Um, we can move on to commissioner questions. I'm sure we have some. I know I have quite a few. Um, Commissioner Zacherson, do you want to go first?
You can start. Let's start. Okay, I'll start if you want. That's fine. Um, I have questions for staff as well as the provider. I know that maybe we'll just do questions for staff first and then the provider can give, I don't know if they have a presentation or anything like that, but there, um, we'll do that and then we can ask questions of them. Does that sound like a good order of operations? Okay. So, staff-wise, um, so I see according to the federal laws that Mr. Givens just kind of went over with us, that the provider needs to demonstrate that a significant gap in service exists. Um, I saw that they stated they they have a significant gap in attachment six of our packet, but I didn't actually see any supporting evidence of that gap. Um, so I was wondering if they provided any uh evidence other than the two lines that were in the report that was given to us.
So I'll uh jump in on this question. Um, the significant gap test is uh is a judicial test when reviewing a claim of uh prohibition or um uh, or yeah, uh, effective prohibition of a wireless facility application. Um, since there has not been a claim for effective prohibition uh by the applicant, there's no need to provide that information at this time.
What does that mean, Mr. Givens? What is, what, could you break down what you just said in kind of normal person talk and not in legalese?
Thank you.
Yeah, so and if uh a city cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit the provision of personal wireless services.
Right, but i- it does say that they need to de- demonstrate a significant gap in service. So is by them demonstrate, by them saying, hey, there's a gap in service, that demonstrates a significant gap in service?
Essentially, they would provide if this would be litigated in court, uh, their argument would be that the city in its action to deny the application had prohibited their ability to provide personal wireless services.
But they don't have to actually prove that there's a gap in service. Just by them saying that, that is the proof enough that the city I'm not, I'm not computing how that that works out. It, they're not that, like, how would you demonstrate a significant gap in service? I would assume there'd be numbers or something saying, you know, this many people don't, aren't connecting to phone calls or whatever. Is there any numbers that they give?
Yes, so generally.
Were we presented with that?
Yeah. No, because that's not an application requirement that.
I thought it was. It said, I I read in the in our packet that the provider needs to demonstrate that a significant gap in service exists. I'm just wondering if we have any of that demonstrated to us. I did not receive any. So I was just wondering if maybe the city had that demonstrated to them.
No, that is not relevant to the decision tonight. Uh, it was not an application requirement for the applicant to provide. That is the discussion I believe you're referencing.
I I'm reading from my packet in on set a page one eleven, one eleven, um, wait, I'm sorry, one twelve.
At the bottom.
Um, it's at the bottom, section B. Uh, it says, "To support a contention that a site is necessary to close a significant gap, a provider must both demonstrate that a significant gap in service exists and that it has chosen the least alternative means of filling that gap." I'm reading that directly from the packet that we got.
Yes.
So I'm just asking if we have proof.
That is.
Please, we're in an official meeting right now.
Yeah, no, I uh. So this is a description of the background of a law in which the city's decision-making is done is.
Which we're trying to do right now. So I I I will move on from this question. I'm just gonna say no, I'm just gonna answer it for myself and say no, that that was not demonstrated.
Well, it's not required that the applicant demonstrates that the.
That's contrary to the information that we were just given, so I I I'm not quite sure where we're at then.
The information provided in the staff report discusses what would happen in the event there is a lawsuit filed against the city.
It does not state that. Okay, we'll move on to the next question. In that same area that I'm citing, it says that the provider also needs to demonstrate that they have chosen the least alternative means of filling that gap. This means making a good faith, I'm reading directly from this packet again. "This means making a good faith effort of identifying and evaluating alternative among alternatives amongst other things and includes analyzing the specifics of the locality's code. The municipality is not compelled to accept the provider's least intrusive means analysis as long as the locality is able to show that there are some potentially available and technologically feasible alternatives." I have several questions for the provider and the applicant on this, but I'm for staff. I'm wondering if uh Saint John's Church could be considered a potentially available and technologically feasible alternative.
I'd be happy to address that as well. Um, so again, I want to clarify that the section that you're citing from in the staff report provides background about federal law and what would happen in the event of a lawsuit by an applicant uh claiming that there's been an effective prohibition of their personal wireless services. That is not germane to tonight's discussion. We have to, the city needs to focus on the findings for approval and the application requirements. The application requirements did not require these, this discussion that you've seen and you've quoted from.
I I'm just wondering if, my question was, is Saint, if Saint John's Church could be considered a potentially available and feasible alternative? That was my question.
Saint John's Church is not a feasible alternative.
And why is that?
And because the applicant provided information to the city in that it initially reached out to Saint John's Church and did not hear from Saint John's Church for four months. In those intervening four months, the uh applicant devoted resources and time to s- at at the present site, um, at which time the um Saint John's Church reached out with potential interest. There is no ability for the city to require that the facility be moved to Saint John's Church.
I was just asking if it was a reasonable alternative. I was not asking if the city could require them to move.
Yes, it was not a reasonable alternative for the city.
Thank you, thank you. Our city code states that standalone tire towers may be considered only when the applicant reasonably demonstrates that the proposed facility cannot be placed on any existing building or structure. Did the applicant demonstrate this?
Yes, the applicant did demonstrate this. The staff's presentation uh before me did address this. Um, I don't know if staff would like to uh provide further comment on that.
Yes, so in the alternative site analysis, um, the applicant provided that within the search area that they identified, that there was not an existing structure tall enough that was not a residential facility that was deemed feasible by their RF engineers.
Does that include Saint John's Church?
I think you want to, probably that'll be a question for.
That'll be a question for the applicant, then I'll leave that for them. Um, and this might also be for the applicant itself, but um I don't, I don't know the actual root, uh, forgive my rudimentary language on this, but could something that is placed on the church do the same job as this, you know, tower that, you know, is being discussed this evening? They have the same power. I I don't know what that means really, but can they do the same thing? Because do they have the same intention?
Right. Uh, that would be a question for the applicant.
Yeah, okay, I will s- I will leave that for the applicant. Um, our city code also states that um monopoles and towers, excuse me, should be encouraged on property zone public facility. And this is zoned office mixed use, correct? Okay. Where do we have public facility zones?
So public facility, um, as the name implies, is generally, it's a city-owned parcel.
City-owned parcels.
Um, and we do have several wireless telecommunications.
We've looked at it before.
Right, exactly, located on um city properties. So public, public facility zones, um, I would, I would say generally do have many telecommunications facilities already located on them. And Verizon identified that there was a gap in coverage in this particular location.
That doesn't have any public facility zone.
There is no public facility zone within this site.
Uh, I will, yeah, so churches also can be a.
Public facility zone.
That's correct.
Wonderful. That's great to know, because it also, I thought somewhere said that the provider is supposed to analyze the specifics of the locality's code, which would mean looking at our city code and trying to, you know, um, um, put their proposal in line with our city code as much as possible. Um, let's see, what else? Sorry, I'm monopolizing some questions here. Um.
I'm noting also that our city code states that substantial landscaping or other screening should be provided to visually buffer any adjoining residential uses. I would assume that means more than a chain link fence. Is that correct? Is that, I would assume that's what substantial landscaping or other screening.
Chairman of the, Andrew Perez, Planning Manager.
Yeah.
In this case, you know, the applicant stated that the reason for no landscaping being proposed is that there's no irrigation presently at the site. Um, and staff made the determination that the existing screening that's existing and proposed around the enclosure is sufficient and.
Is that substantial though? Is this, is a chain link fence substantial? I I guess that's subjective, but.
Exactly, and and, you know, we've talked about it internally and questioned whether um it'd be appropriate to impose a requirement yeah, for substantial landscaping.
Yeah, it seems like, it's, it's written into our code, so it would just, it would assume to me that we would probably want to make something look a little less prison-like with a chain length fence and more, you know.
It is a cloth, it is a cloth-lined chain link.
Yeah, but I mean, that's like a step up.
Oh, right, I I understand. I also wanted to add that it would require a new water connection.
Um, the facility would.
It would require, well, no, if if we were to impose landscaping, it would require a new water connection, um, which is a question of whether that is a reasonable imposition that the city can ask for the applicant.
Understandably, but there's other things such as like larger, more decorative fences or, you know, something that has a little more, I don't know, appeal, less, yeah, more appeal, less prison, you know, vibe.
Yeah, I do wanna, uh, it's sorry, this is Bennett Givens. I just want to uh clarify that the requirement that I believe the commissioner is referencing is in the uh city's guidelines from twenty seventeen, the uh section D requirements for monopoles and towers. I just want to clarify that, so this, that is the code section that you're referring to.
I didn't write down the code section, but it was directly out of our city code. I, the, the city staff might be able to better answer that question. Yes, that's correct.
Alright, thank you. Yeah, that, that is a policy that's separate apart from the city's code, but it is a, a requirement on wireless facilities.
Correct. Um, and then just, this is kind of just a general question, but the shot clock, when does that end for us? And what, do we kind of have a breakdown of what it looks like?
Yes, so currently, this application qualifies uh for a hundred and fifty day shot clock. Uh, the city had some tolling of the shot clock due to some incompleteness items from the application.
Does tolling mean that like a pausing?
Correct, that the shot clock would pause for a number of days until the applicant submits missing information. Due to that tolling, the current shot clock will expire on March eighth. Um, the city must make a final decision within the shot clock period. The final decision. The final decision includes the issue of any appeals and the issuance of any ancillary permits required beyond the CUP considered tonight.
Thank you. Those are my only questions at this point. Mr. Buchanan, do you want to ask?
I don't have any additional questions. I was just also going to look for some clarification on the shot clock, but that's been provided, so thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sacreson, do you have any questions for staff?
I don't. I had, I had anticipated a very large crowd, so I have some of my questions answered earlier today by staff. Thank you very much. I will have thoughts, but I'd like to hear from everybody that's shown up.
Yeah, definitely. I think at this time we were going to have the applicant get on and I don't know what they were going to do, but at this time we'll reserve this for the applicant.
So we do have a project representative and we also have an RF emissions engineer available. So please direct your questions specifically to who you would like to speak on the matter.
Did they have something that they were going to present to us, or do, are they just here for questions at this point?
So I admitted both Madison Lescalza and Durang Tech, both representatives from the applicant. If either one of them would like to make a brief statement, please feel free.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Durang Tank. I'm sorry I can't be with you guys in person today. I live in San Diego and we had a little bit of flooding these days. Any event, again, my name is Durang Tech. I'm with D-Tech Communications. We provide the RF report that staff presented. And I wanted to, to talk to you a little bit about when we do an RF exposure report like this. We, we look at the drawings, we look at the RFDS, which is, contains all this, the, the antenna specifics. And we look at the surrounding structures. And then we make, and then when we do our, our emissions calculations, we look at the worst-case scenario. We look at all the powers transmit, all the frequencies transmit at full power at the same time. And the ground would be, would serve, or any surfaces would be perfect reflections, which they are not. And there's no losses to other obstructions. Now, being, when you do a simulation like this where the power is active all the time, that's not, that's not realistic. It is, in reality, the, the, the powers would transmit a lot less because a lot of people would be, users would be at different different locations, different points, and then the power would adjust accordingly. So in reality, it's going to be much, much less. However, doing this way gives us a really good upper limit of what it's like. And again, we, and when we look at the, when we look at the worst-case scenario, all look at the ground as well, that's the adjacent building nearby to the south. And, and also, and also the, also the, the nearby residents, they all will comply with FCC safety limit for, for general population. So at this point, this is really the, an ideal case from RF exposure standpoint, because it's a standalone tower. It's not near any, any adjacent close-by buildings such as city of San Francisco, for example. And this is, would be, this would be ideal. So in, in, in conclusion, it is the, it is the, the, this site would, we would, it is completely, it would be in compliance with FCC safety requirements. And I'm, I'm here to, to answer questions. I'll be happy to answer questions regarding our study.
Thank you. And this is Madison Lescalza. I'm here via Zoom. However, Pete Chubin is there in person on behalf of Sequoia to represent us.
Okay.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Pete Chubin. I'm with Sequoia Deployment Services. Madison and I work together, as was mentioned by Durang earlier. There's been some travel difficulties today coming up from south. Dwayne Bonham is the radio frequency engineer. That's different than the compliance engineer, the, the, the purpose that Durang serves that he spoke to. So with questions regarding coverage and those items, we're here to answer those questions. We did not prepare a formal presentation. Staff went through the details, so we didn't see a need to do that. If you'd like, we could jump right into answering your questions that you.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you so much.
With the first one.
Oh, you, you had questions written down.
I wrote them down.
Okay, I think we also probably all have additional questions that we were.
How would you like to start? We'll go either way.
Yeah, go for it for right now, but there, there might be more was my point.
We expected.
Thank you.
With regard to the demonstrated gap, although it's not a requirement of the code, the application materials include a propagation maps and other data to support that, that position.
Did we receive that? I don't recall receiving anything like that.
And what those, what those maps show is that there is a gap in coverage. And Dwayne can explain that in detail to your liking. Shows that where the other sites existing on public facility zoning, for example, to the north, then a small zone next to the school that's in the public right ways, interesting that the, the attorney mentioned that, cannot provide the necessary service to the area that this site is intended to cover. So those, the application materials include that analysis, and we can answer additional questions on it. With regard to Saint John's Church.
Well, we'll, we'll take a look while.
Thank you. We didn't receive those, those documents.
With regard to Saint John's Church, we did send them a letter of interest.
Do you know what date you sent that?
No, I didn't bring that, you know, exact date with me, but it was very early on in the process. It was before there was any candidate selected.
I do have the date, thank you. The date that the letter was received was January 6th, 2023.
Received to the church.
Exactly. And then the date that the letter of interest was sent off to Verizon was 4/5/2023.
So I guess, I guess that follow-up question is, who's in April, there was expressed interest from another property owner within our city, within the area that Verizon had deemed the area that they would like to place a tower. Can you explain to us why that was not pursued as the least intrusive option?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
I'll get, I'll get through it. It's a, a story. I'll try to keep it brief. When we start a search ring, we look at it. It's literally a dot in our ring on a map or weird shapes as the site has to be in. When we, doesn't extend.
Sorry about that.
When we start a search ring, we have a dot on the map, a circle of politics called the search ring or polygon in an area where we start looking for sites. We start with zoning analysis, pull up public maps, zoning maps, city codes, those items, and look where a facility could be located. And we will pepper pretty much everybody within that area that has a property that appears to be able to satisfy the city's code requirements. So for location, technical needs, all of those items, we do not know if those property owners will be interested. But we look at them. We send them letters. We call them. We try to generate interest.
So did you call the, the church facility as well?
We would have contacted their phone number.
When I looked on the, on the.
Report, there wasn't a phone number listed. So I was curious when you guys called them and.
That would have been at, around that same time period.
You know what number you called?
No, I don't. What we, what we do is we call around, we look at those properties. We find interest, because sometimes there's no one who's interested. And then we look at the next step. Multiple rings, multiple sites, small cells, dividing up from one macro facility, which would be the most efficient way to provide, least intrusive as well, because there's less facilities to provide the service. When we look at that property, specifically the church property, it's down at the southern edge of the search area. It is against a very large bluff that rises dramatically, right adjacent to the property. It would not be a facility that could serve, provide service in all directions. It's also far down to the south, so all it would do is provide a partial solution. So what happened is if we put the site there, we would probably end up needing another facility north of this one that we have right now to provide service in a gap that would develop between the existing site, which is at a city water tank and that site far to the south on the south edge. So if the church had come to us and said right away, for example, immediately right off the bat and said, we're interested, we would have talked to them about their facility. I went by today. The structure's not tall enough to support antennas, so it would be, we would have been looking at another freestanding structure. And then with that, we would eventually have been looking at yet another freestanding structure. So the totality of service provision from locating the site down at the church would be two sites eventually, not just one. So with that, even if we could put a freestanding structure at the church, we would still have, at the end of the day, more sites than we need to efficiently provide the service to the area.
That sounds logical, but wouldn't it be fair to say that because a significant gap could feasibly be seen in the future with just people having more devices and whatnot, that's always going to be the case? I mean, you're always going to have the argument that we might need another one and we might need another one. And, and I'm not saying that I'm against growth, but isn't that kind of?
Yeah, and Mr. Bonham could more, better explain that. But if you don't do a efficient design, you get there faster and you end up with more sites than you would otherwise. So it is, for the immediate need, it is more intrusive to have a site that doesn't provide the service. And knowing you're going to need to go right out of the gate, right away, go looking for another facility to provide that service. So from, from the viewpoint of how the site search works, we don't know what facility style would be acceptable to that property owner. We do know that it would be a partial solution. And we do know that we would end up with multiple sites where a properly placed site would only require one. And if you looked at the pins, not just the church, but the pins on where we looked, we said, well, antennas, put them up higher. Let's put the antenna up higher, cover a larger area. When we looked up at the pin that's up on the block and said, if we put it up there, well, we'll cover a larger area. It's too tall. And Mr. Bonham could explain that, how that overshoots the coverage area. It doesn't provide the needed service. With regard to the farm to the north, it was, we talked to them extensively, looking at that, looking at that as setbacks from other uses. You know, the compatibility of a farm use, put it out behind the barn, literally out behind the barn. They said, we do not have space for this. The way the fields are plowed, the way the fields are used, that won't work there. Our use by our barns, that area is left vacant on purpose, because that's an intensely used area for farming equipment and the various machinery that they use for their farming operation. So we talked to them in short of the, the farms not being available for the way they're plowed, short of the, the farming area, the industrial part of it, where they have their equipment not being available, the church being a partial solution. This location is about what's left that's not zoned residential. If you look at an air photo of the area, county and city, if it's developed, it's developed with residential. If you get up towards the high school, say we'll go to the high school, it was a comment that was mentioned in the back. There's a small cell next to the high school in the public right way to provide that spot.
I mean, you could argue that it is zoned residential office mixed uses. It does have residential within our zoning. So technically, it is zoned residential.
Not allow for single-family residential.
Right, but it is still zoned a residential multifamily, so.
No, it is not.
At all?
No, it doesn't, well, it does, office.
So I think it's just some miscommunication, but office mixed use would allow for multifamily residential. Hasn't allowed, you know, conditionally allowed use, so.
So technically, the OMU does allow under CUP to have, to have residential properties.
And Chairman, if I can jump in. Staff was able to pull up the coverage maps that are provided.
Wonderful.
By Verizon, so whenever the applicant would like to speak to those, we can pull them up and take a look.
That sounds great. Do you want to look at those now, or do you want to wait?
Can I, can I just address something you said real quickly? Because you made a statement that it was least intrusive to use this, and I'm paraphrasing, I apologize if I mess your words up. Please correct me. Least intrusive to do this one cell site for the coverage as opposed to potentially or most likely multiple sites if you had used the Saint John's Church location. That being said, I, I appreciate that viewpoint as an applicant. But I believe it's in the city's interest to consider whether or not multiple sites would actually work out better to provide both the coverage that you're suggesting you provide, which the demand is there, the demand is there. I have a Verizon phone, I get it. I, I want more coverage too. But at what cost? And I think really that's the conversation we're trying to have.
Do you have a, Commissioner, do you have a location in mind that you'd see that second site that wouldn't be at the high school, wouldn't be in the farm fields and wouldn't be in the residential zone?
To be completely honest, I do not, because until you said it, which I didn't see in any of the reports. And I'm a little concerned as to why it wasn't in the reasoning for Saint John's being out, out of, out of option or not on the table. The, the table that we got said that there was one letter mailed out, no phone calls placed, and then it was ruled out. That is the, in total, why we were told. So I, if I had had that information, I absolutely would have looked into more.
That's why I'm, I'm here to answer those questions tonight and to expound on that. The, the, the answer, it was a rhetorical from, from our viewpoint. The entire search area is, as I described, and there was a map that was shown earlier and staff could bring it up if they'd like, we could look at it again, is shown to be the residential, the farmland, this property, Saint John's Church. So that location to the north, it's not there. There's some other uses further up there, but that's not where the site needs to be. It begins to get too close to the existing sites to the north. So it's a duplicate, and I should let Mr. Bonham answer and explain duplication of coverage.
Thank you.
Would you like to look at the maps now, or we?
That would be great. That would be great, yeah.
Hello, I'm Dwayne Bonham, RF Engineer for Verizon Wireless. So we provide service using two separate frequency bands, what's called the low band. Low band has very limited capacity, however, it covers a large area. It's very useful spectrum from that point and that you can use it almost anywhere. The downfall of it is it's very small chunks of bandwidth that do not provide great capacity over large areas. And is susceptible to running out of capacity when it's trying to serve capacity at distance. The area this circle does currently serve from the site at the very top of the ring, which is at one of your city water tanks. And it covers this area from, if I recall right off the top of my head, I think it's about 1.3 miles away. So this map shows 700 coverage. See, there's a few areas, a green is good coverage, that's good in-building coverage. Yellow would be what we consider good in-vehicle coverage, so a little bit easier to do than in-building. And red would be good if you're standing out on the street. So as you can see, most of this in the low band is covered fairly well with a few small spots where we have street level coverage. This is the current map as our service is. If you go to the next map, that will be with the location. As you can see, it does improve some areas that had street level coverage and now are in-vehicle coverage. Okay, the next map will be our mid-band coverage. This is the workhorse. This is 80% 80 to 90% of the capacity we have to serve customers. This is the new technology that really provides the data capacity that people utilize on their devices these days. And as you can see, as we go to the mid-band, mid-band does not cover out as far from the cell site as the low bands do. So you see that the holes are opening up. You can see that the the residential in the portion of town there has a significant. a significant coverage gap at these frequencies. Okay, I go to the next map. And as you can see, at the mid-band, which is what's really important to us these days, because that's what provides the capacity, this site does close in, close those gaps in service. And let's see, I'm not sure if we included another slide. I think it was just a.
Those were the four.
Yeah, so that that shows that the main reason that I needed to design the site and build a site in this area is that our low-band frequencies that reach out and, and provide coverage in a lot of this area are exhausted. They're out of gas, they're going to continue to get worse. We shed traffic as much as we can over the mid-band, however, the mid-band doesn't cover out as far. And we needed something in this area to improve the mid-band coverage and remove some of the low-band utilization or usage off of that distant site that's up there to the north of the water tank. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, may I ask, is there, are the other sites mid-band covering equipment maximized with the best technology that is available to you already?
Yes, that is the, the cheapest way for us to provide this solution and we are a corporation. If we can provide service by just modifying our existing sites, that will always be our first choice.
Okay.
Can you just provide some illustration in terms of what does? I'm curious what the red areas look like from a consumer's perspective. Is this dropped calls? Is it inaudible calls? Is it slow data?
It, it would be a combination of the above. It would be your phone intermittently working while you're inside your house or inside your vehicle. It would be drop calls. It would be voice fade outs when you're sitting there talking and you lose bits of data, which would be voice and blank out. Slow loading applications on your phone.
Got it, thank you.
Does anyone have, do my fellow commissioners have more questions for the applicant that they want to ask at this time?
Not at the moment.
No. Um, I don't think I have any coverage questions. Was there more that you had written down that you wanted to cover?
We jumped, we jumped ahead.
Yeah, we did jump.
We jumped ahead and I'm just looking through. Chairman, just to make sure I don't, don't leave any of your questions off the table. We discussed the height of St. John's Church. The facility location with the high schools as it shows up there on the map with it being there. There was some discussion regarding the fence. And there is no irrigation on the location. There's also no, the, the existing fence is solid around the perimeter of that back half of the property. So you have to be into the storage area before you could actually see the facility. If there was some different.
Sorry, sorry, he's speaking right now.
For the equipment with regard to the landscaping or your comments regarding the fence, a fence material, is there a fence material you'd prefer to see? Because that is, that is up to, we proposed to match what was out there, to change that is, is not a problem for us. And that is specifically to screen the equipment as existing fence stuff.
Thank you. Um, I had, I had a question on the I guess the MP, through MPE Limits attachment. It was in Attachment seven, figure two, one and two. And perhaps you can answer these questions. They're more techno or why things are the way they are. Maybe you can explain it a little bit better to me.
We'll leave the engineering questions to the engineer who's on fumes.
Okay.
Uh, to, excuse me, who's online.
Who's on, I forgot that he was there.
He is the, the best individual to answer those before you even ask. If we could bring him up, that would be wonderful.
Do I'm here?
Wonderful. Um, I don't know if we can bring up figure one and two of Attachment seven, give you guys a minute. Well, it was in our packet of.
Yeah, so you want the EMF summary or did you want the site map?
I guess this, we can even go off of this one. I mean, it's slightly, I think it's the same one that was in our attachment.
Which elevation are you referring to? It's at the bottom of the figure.
The analysis is three.
Chairman, this is at an elevation of 14 feet, which is the anticipated roof height of buildings around there and then.
Hold on, let me find the exact thing.
The figure one is mostly white and figure three has the blue, yellow and red.
I think it was. It would be roof height, I guess.
At the elevation of 14 feet?
It doesn't say it on there, so.
Bottom left corner.
Yeah. This is antenna level and then elevation level.
So figure one is at ground level, I assume then, because it says zero.
That's right.
So is that, is that what we're looking at then?
This is the ground level.
Okay. If I'm reading this correctly, this figure, does, the white is less than 5% exposure levels and the green is five to 100%, correct?
That, that is correct, Commissioner. Less than 5% is, is white and is considered ambient levels.
Okay.
And then the green is below the general population limit.
Right, right. I, I understand all that. Is it, it just, it seems strange that the closer to the, the site is like less. Is that because of the way it I don't know, rains down on you? I, I don't know the right way to talk about that.
She's making a, a hand showing how the, the signal propagates. Okay, it's how the signal propagates from the antennas.
Yes. I, that's a, that's a good question, a good point. And the reason it looks that, because the antenna has, has the radiation pattern or, or emission patterns. And it is mostly, it goes out direct in front of outward, it's not down. So when you are below the antenna, is actually you're the best, you're better. Um, because the, think of it like a flashlight that, that looks outward.
Right. So, so if I zoomed out on this image and like, you know, made that green area come more into play, is it, how, what does it look like there? Like, because you just said it gets, it's, you're actually better when you're closer at ground, ground level. Like, what does it look like beyond that little square that we're seeing? Is it green? Is it blue?
No, no, it would be, you'd have a, a band of, a small band of green. Basically another cir, outer circle of green.
How big is that outer circle though? And how can you, like? It's, it's just strange that that's where the residential properties are and we can't really see what it looks like for those residential properties.
It would still be, it would still be well, well below the FCC's.
I, I, it could be, but I'm not seeing that on this map is, or on this figure at all. I don't see that. I see the general area and then I see a little tiny, tiny corners beyond it, but I don't see anything beyond that where the actual like residential properties are.
The, the reason we, we do this is that we zoom in because, so that it gives you more context, a little more.
Right, it gives me context of this, but it doesn't give me context of the actual residents that are living there 24/7.
We also looked at that as well.
But I don't see that. I, 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 if you looked at it, I, I can't see it and it was not presented to us.
Yes.
Durang, questions, questions, Commissioner, if I may.
Yeah.
Questions in the room, it, it's really at the point where the white turns to green, does the emission level continue to drop as you move farther away from the site therefore?
Well, it's not dropping, it's going up.
It would, at that white and green line, what hap, I'll reword the question.
Yeah.
What happens to the level of emissions as you move farther away from the site? Is that a fair?
Oh, I would love to have seen it represented. I guess it's a fair question. I mean, for all I know, I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
In a way that he, he could explain it by.
Yeah.
So.
So when you, when you move out, when you move out, when you start to, to, to reach that green part, it, it will, it still will be below, but it starts to increase a little bit and then it decrease, de, decrease exponentially.
When does it start decreasing exponentially? When does it start decreasing exponentially though?
At what difference?
Is it like a mile away? Like where? I'm only seeing this small area.
Yeah, it starts, well, beca, because when you look at it, you have to look at patterns, antenna patterns. And so that's where the, the patterns hit the ground. And then when it start, and it, it increases a little bit, but but it decreases as you get about halfway between the green and the next white.
Mister, I, I, but that's, we're going to ask the room, please, please have some patience. I know that there are a lot of feelings and, and we respect them, but please respect the people that did show up to try to answer our questions. They are doing their best to do their job. I, I understand your question and, and I, I echo it a little bit. So let me narrow down the, the question to be a little more specific to Mr. Tech's expertise. We have residents in the room who live anywhere from 100 to 500 feet away from this proposed tower site. Can you speak to just those distances? What does the RF emissions look like at those distances? So that we can have a better understanding as laypeople. Right, thank you, Mr. Tech.
Okay, so we, um, so when you look at anywhere, the figure that you, you just mentioned, anywhere on the ground, it is the, the highest exposure anywhere on the ground with in the green areas, it is 39.5% of the public limit.
Okay, thank you.
And, and we also looked, because Pete had asked me before on, on his way up, that it, the the questions might be, so if you're living at the, the nearest residence, which we looked at, it just, I had my team look at it before, before this meeting. And the, the nearest adjacent to the, to the east, which is about 140 feet away, it is 32.5% there. And like I mentioned, this is a really, a really upper limit. If you actually go out and make measurements, it will be much, in real, in real life, it'd be much less than that.
And you're saying it's, just to clarify, 32.5% of the allowable level of emissions per the FCC regulation by which we have to abide, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And that, does that does that get any greater the further out you go?
He's, I think he said the maximum is 39.5.
That would be the maximum was 39.5.
Is that correct?
Anyone, Mr. Tech?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
And that's depicted on that, on that, uh, that image that you sent out, it's on the center there. That's below next, on the, on the center, below, on the lower center quarter.
I see where, I see where it's depicted, but I, I guess that doesn't really, it's not very clear what that means in terms of the image.
Understood.
Okay, thank you. Do, fellow commissioners, is there any other questions you have to the applicant at this time?
No.
Commissioner, okay, I don't ask. Uh, I just double check.
Yeah, I would appreciate if you could hang out, um, in case the, and I anticipate you will anyway, but in case any of the public has comments that, you know, raise questions that we don't have answers to, maybe you can speak to it more knowledgeably.
Not, not a problem. I, I'm sure it'll be a lot said. If there's anything in particular, we'll be available and come up and you could ask and we will answer.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, um, at this point then, we are going to move on to our public comment period. During, we, we clearly have a lot of people in the room tonight. So I'm going to ask everyone to please limit your comments to the three minutes that you have for the public comment period. Otherwise, we might be here all night. And I don't think anyone wants that. Also, please state your name when you come up and, you know, you're, where you, where you live, but you don't have to be very specific, but you know what city you're living in. Um, and then what we'll do if there is questions that come up during, you know, people tend to ask questions during public comment, we're going to catalog them and ask them back to the city where the applicants, like after the public comment period, just so we can achieve a little bit of order in the room tonight. I hope that's okay with everyone. Okay, so with that, I will invite people to come up for public comment at this time, if you just want to rise to the podium.
I am very shy, so you can tell.
You're doing great.
My name is Jeff Metcalf. Um, I've been a resident of Arroyo Grande and a member of St. John's Lutheran Church since 1988. And I come here as a church council member uh, with the blessing of the council. Uh, and all of the information that has been given out about this document uh, by all the parties involved has been accurate. Uh, and there has, there was no follow-up call. That's the one thing that did not happen. And so St. John's has no point of view about what's going on between the three parties. We're not here for that. What St. John's wants the city and the other two parties to know is that we stand ready to receive this project and consider it for our location. We want you to know you have a plan B. Okay, and so we're not here to choose a side. We're here to let you know that we're, we're willing to serve if, if called upon. That's my entire statement.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Tony Kabliska and I'm the president of Sunrise Terrace Mobile Homeowners Association. We've got about 300 homes and 480 residents, all senior citizens. We took a survey and over 89% were opposed to having a cell tower located at 789 Valley Road. And while I understand that there's nothing the planning commission can do um, about the health risks and the, whether the physical or mental health and apparently Verizon doesn't care, we as senior citizens, we do care. And, and there are effects mentally and physically to the residents. I spent 40 years working for AT&amp;T. My last job, I was responsible for maintaining cell sites in the 13 western United States. I'm here to tell you, there will be no mistaking this cell tower or a water tower every time a resident drives within 100 feet of it. We will know it is a cell tower and that will have a damaging effect on all the senior citizens. This cell towers also go to alter the visual and aesthetic conditions from many of our homes, those that are close by, as well though, as those that are farther away at the top of the park where we now have unrestricted views of the dunes and the ocean. We are now going to have a, a water tower, uh, cell tower sticking up right in the middle of a vacant lot. I find it rather unique that no landscaping can be put because of a lack of irrigation for a water tower. We at Sunrise Terrace love our city of Arroyo Grande and we're proud to call it home. We thank Mayor Karen, the entire city council for the great work in making our city such a wonderful place to live. And I also want to thank the planning commission for hearing our residents' voices. Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, thanks for all of your information tonight. I'm Carol Cranfield. I live on Muirfield Drive and I'm very affected by this tower. All is well and good, but we don't want it. And I'm also in charge of being a spokesperson and a leader for these people you see here tonight. And on their behalf, I want to present a petition to you. We don't want it. We have 245 signatures. And we would appreciate the consideration of the city planning commission to disapprove this tower. Materials provided by Verizon Wireless state the location would have little or no visual impact. This is a false statement. I live on Muirfield. I get up in the morning, I open my curtains and I'm going to stare right at this tower. It's very disheartening and it's also very mentally upsetting. Um, we've obtained these signatures and should this be approved, it would be a major environmental injustice impact for our community. Putting this tower near us would cause financial, emotional and physical damage to senior citizens who are a protected class. This project would sicken residents by continuous exposure to non-iodizing radiation emitted from these towers. Um, in a, a, a memo Andrew Perez wrote. Um, in a, a, a memo Andrew Perez, uh, wrote to the architectural committee, there's a statement that we're a mobile home park. You know, we're not trailer trash. We have a value of twenty-four million dollars as, as an asset, which includes our clubhouse and rec facilities. Our properties could decline up to eight to twenty percent, proven fact, if there is a tower put up. That's eighty-two thousand to a hundred thou, a hundred thousand per home, which totals a million dollars. Is somebody going to compensate that for us when we need to go into a nursing home? The city Verizon, you have a million dollars you want to give us, we'll take it. We ask for your help to support this, these two hundred and forty-five Sunrise Terrace homeowners who sign this position and implore you to disapprove this tower. It will be socially and morally wrong. We're grateful for your support. Please say no to this. Thanks for the information and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm going to have to ask everyone to, to not clap between public comments. It's just to keep a little bit of order. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Heron and I live at Sunrise Terrace Mobile Home Park. And I wanted to thank, uh, the city council, uh, for adopting its telecommunications, uh, guidance and requirements. And based on those requirements, the applicant has submitted this radio frequency emission statement certified by DTEC Communications LLC, hoping, hoping to demonstrate compliance with the federal communications commission guidelines. So further, the DTEC study found, and I quote, "For a typical six-foot person standing on the ground, an adjacent building rough light poles, calculations for Verizon's site resulted in exposure levels below the FCC's most stringent general population maximum permissible exposure limits." That's in that, that figure one and two. And then DTEC's study also found that at antenna elevation, which you mentioned was forty-seven feet, I didn't say that in before. Uh, the highest calculated, and I, and I quote, "The highest calculated exposure level is above the FCC's general population maximum, uh, permissible exposure limits." The overexposure, and that's that, um, that's that, uh, exhibit three with the red, the yellow and the blue, areas extend ninety feet from the front face of the Verizon antenna. Uh, and they say from, uh, they say from the provided drawings, there are no other buildings or surrounding structures within ninety feet of the Verizon antennas. Okay, there are, however, and they didn't mention this, property lines. And the absence of buildings or structures at the antenna elevation does not change the fact that a restricted area generated by the Verizon cell tower encroaches onto the property owned by Sunrise Terrace. And you can see that I, I put together a little package for you to look at. And, uh, there's an exhibit there and then I doctored exhibit three, you can look at that. So obviously, the residents of Sunrise Terrace didn't come here tonight to cheer on such an encroachment. Uh, at the very least, okay, at the very least, Verizon should choose a site where it has complete, complete control over areas exceeding FCC general population, uh, exposures. And cities, can, can I just finish this one statement?
One more.
And the cities, uh, the cities' conditions of approval will not correct that. They don't, they won't correct it because there are two properties involved. They're conditioning, uh, the adjacent property, but they're, they can't condition Sunrise Terrace's property.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reginald Johnson and I'm a resident of, uh, Sunrise Terrace. I just wanted to point out something I think that I gathered this evening from the presentation was that the letter from the applicant was sent to St. John's in early March. And I believe a letter was-
I believe it was January, but-
January, okay. Uh, a letter was then sent from St. John's around early April, maybe the fifth of April or something. Um, it would appear to me that, uh, the applicant decided the horse they wanted to ride, okay, without, um, waiting for a response, potential response from the church. And if anyone's ever dealt with a church, they don't make decisions overnight. It takes quite some time, so I don't think it was given due consideration. That's just my observation.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Barbara Hill and I also am a resident of Sunrise Terrace. I picked up on two points that I'm curious about. They keep using the FCC regulations and, and all the limits, the word general population. And I wonder if we are actually in that demographic, given the residents that are in Sunrise Terrace, many of whom are not only elderly but in poor health. So that's my first question, if that, if that general population really fits us. My second point is, on page four of the PowerPoint, there was a notation, I don't know, that, that you guys have the right to, that you have a lot of not, you have a lot of restrictions that you cannot do legally, no matter how much we want you to. But they, you also have some citing rights, if I remember correctly. And I'm wondering how much that comes into play in your decision-making. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bob Tamer. I actually live up on the mesa. You know, I live probably two hundred feet from one cell, cell tower that's underground. And probably five hundred feet from another one that's up on trees or up on the post. And-
Thank you.
Uh, when the cell tower that was up on the post, um, was turned on. Now, I don't know whether, um, this is why I contracted shingles, but two weeks after it was turned on, I got shingles. And two weeks after that, my neighbor got shingles, who put up the cell tower. Now, you can ask him and he'll say it has nothing to do with cell towers. In my opinion, it didn't. So I don't know. That's just all I have to say on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Daniels and I'm a new resident of Sunrise Terrace, but we've lived in Arroyo Grande since nineteen seventy-six. And it's a beautiful city and we love it. However, I think we have a clear case of discrimination. Choosing this site is discriminating against, and I'll put myself in this classification, old folk. We probably won't be around for ten or fifteen years. The impact on us and maybe our whining and crying won't affect you. However, there's also a subdivision across the street from us that is low income. So why is this site chosen for impact, regardless of what minimal impact it is for old people and low-income people? There should be an alternative site, don't you think? And also, my second point is, they showed us a lovely map and where there wasn't much cellphone service, I think that's out in the middle of the fields.
Thank you.
None of this is from Saturday morning. Hi, my name is Martin Lowey. I'm, uh, my wife and I are residents of Sunrise Terrace. I'd just like to make one point, and that is regarding the, uh, loss of value. I heard everything that was said and what can be taken into consideration and what can't. But you can't unhear information that you get. We are senior citizens. Most of us that live in Sunrise Terrace will not die there. Most of us will move to some kind of long-term care facility or move in with relatives, all of which requires money. I'd like to address the costs. It's not a million dollars. We have homes that, uh, each homeowner could lose in the neighborhood of fifty to a hundred thousand dollars in value. If we take the mean seventy-five thousand, that translates to over twenty-two million dollars in lost revenue for the homeowners and residents of Sunrise Terrace. This is money that would be spent for residential care through the balance of our lifetime. Whether you can legally take that into consideration, I don't know, but you can't unhear it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Gary Schmidt, also a resident of Sunrise Terrace. We all love our cell phones and need transmission towers. The question is, where is the best place to build them, considering the economic and health concerns of the public? The debate on these health concerns is now where the debate was for cigarette smoke and asbestos some years ago. Fortunately, we are now protected from these health risks. The growing evidence is that electromagnetic radiation poses significant health risks and it is statistically proven that property values decline significantly. As with cigarette smoke and asbestos, federal and state laws lag far behind the research findings. Research insurance companies, on the other hand, are businesses that anticipate risk. They are paying attention to the scientific evidence and are writing exclusions into health and liability policies related to the effects of electromagnetic radiation. This evidence should also be guiding this process. So the question remains, where is the best place to locate the tower? As late as the report, the Alternative Candidate Analysis Report dated September seventh, twenty twenty-three, the location of St. John's Church was deemed acceptable. However, the contacts with that church were not made. The evidence from the report shows that there were no contacts made and yet they said they were. Tonight, we are hearing other information that St. John's Church is not acceptable. This is a late analysis and argumentation that wasn't part of the original packet. There is a best place to locate this tower and that is on the property of St. John's Church, which they say is agreeable. Placing it there is not going to pose a health risk to residents and it will not adversely affect residential property values. Please reject this proposal and ask the applicant to do the alternative candidate assessment, which that should have been done in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robert Thompson. I also live in Sunrise Terrace.
I have to get closer to the mic.
My name is Robert Thompson from Sunrise Terrace. Uh, I've been in real estate for thirty years and I'd like to talk to you about the value of property. It's, uh, the California Association of Realtors Property Sellers Questionnaire specifically lists cell towers on the disclosure form for sellers of real estate. The seller must, and I emphasize must, note neighborhood nuisances or other problems, including cell towers. Many people are skeptical because of the health risk and impact on property values. Increasing number of people don't want to live their cell towers. In some areas with new towers, property values have decreased by up to twenty percent. A recent survey by the National Institute for Science found ninety-four percent of homeowners are less interested and would pay less for a property located near a cell tower or antenna. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development long considered cell towers as hazardous and nuisance. The FHA appraiser must, and I indicate again, must, indicate whether the dwelling or related property improvements are located near a cellphone tower or high voltage transmission line. Basically, I'm telling you as a Realtor, most likely your home will decrease in value of up to twenty percent if you live near a cellphone tower. And also, I have one question for the gentleman from Verizon. I, uh, understand that I might be incorrect, but I understand that AT&amp;T and other applicants can attach to your tower and that would give us more exposure to recognition.
We're going to answer all questions, but thank you.
My name is Carolyn Ruth. My husband Arthur and I moved to Sunrise Terrace in two thousand fourteen. We live at eight oh seven Muirfield Drive by the entrance to the park. You could see our place on that picture you showed of the, of the parking lot where this tower is going to go. You can see our greenhouse right there. We live on the first street called Muirfield, right across the ravine from the Victorian parking lot. Our backyard and patio will be eighty feet from the proposed tower. The tower will obstruct our view, diminish sunlight and be a constant reminder of the dangerous emissions which may be emitted into our backyard. Ironically, if we lived a few feet closer, the cell tower project would never have been considered. Many cities have, many cities, many cities have increased the distance between proposed cell towers and existing homes to two hundred, three hundred or more feet. Why? Because they, they just don't know exactly how these cellphone emissions affect human beings. Like many people in Sunrise Terrace, Arthur and I have health issues. Arthur is scheduled for an operation in March to treat his Parkinson's called deep brain stimulation. How will these cell tower emissions affect Arthur? This is a big concern. Also, to address the elephant in the room, the worth of our biggest asset, our homes, studies have been done to show that diminished property values of homes close to cellphone towers are the residents of, on Muirfield and the surrounding homes are worried. The question really is, how much will the values go down and how much other homes will be affected? We just don't know. In addition, we are not convinced that the search committee did its due diligence. Sunrise Terrace is surrounded by acres and acres of farmland. Surely there would be more, a more suitable place in all this open space. In conclusion, my husband and I have known this, about this project for less than a month and we've received no formal notice. It has gone this far with little to no input from the people most impacted, the residents of Sunrise Terrace. Our community represents three hundred homes and we're nearly unanimous in our opposition to this project. Surely, we as a community can work together to find a better location. All of us are counting on you to reject this current proposal. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Ethel Landers and I live on Sunrise Terrace. And forgive me if I get teary. My neighbor's Arthur, he used to help me hang art and I've watched this man struggle to keep going. And now this cell tower, it's okay to put it eighty feet, a hundred feet away from him? That's okay? It's about two hundred feet away from me, by the way. When I open my, uh, uh, curtains in the morning, it's going to be right there out my, my living room window. I'll probably lose about seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand in property value. Do you want it at your house? I see it's not going in.
Just make sure you're addressing.
Okay, well, yeah. Let me tell you, I get worked up because not only me, I'm counting on this money to be used. to be used for my long-term care. That's what senior citizens do. I know none of you are there yet. But we all did these jobs. We saved. I'm a single seventy-three-year-old woman. I need this home to maintain its value. And just to let you know, I know the FCC rules have been around for decades. Hundreds of scientists will tell you they're outdated. They have not kept up with this technology. It's just like when I was told cigarette smoking is okay. It's sexy. It's good for you. Well, now, this radio this radio frequency radiation from this tower will likely affect all of us, especially those of us close to it. And here's some of the adverse effects that have been documented. We see dizziness, ringing in the ears, lack of appetite, balance issues, migraines, skin rashes, neurological issues, cardiac arrest, tumor and cancer. That's just some of them. You can find thousands of these situations on the web because people are being affected. I know you don't have the rules that cover that. The FCC hasn't updated their rules, and that's what all the cell companies will tell you. We meet the FCC regulations. So who will pay for the cost of treating our illnesses when they start? Or are we gonna die before we die from these illnesses? I don't know. I'm just asking. I'm asking you to relocate this, to change the city's regulations. Put some footage allowance in there. Protect people who live in the homes near these things. Please. Other cities are doing it. Hundreds of cities in California have put restrictions, five hundred feet, a thousand feet. Give us a chance at living near these things. This proposal is a threat to my health and to my neighbor's health. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Thompson. I live at eight oh eight Mirfield, and I'm a new resident as of October twenty twenty-three. This issue of the cell tower has been a real disappointment. Here, we thought we had a new home, great neighbors, and being retired, that we were in paradise. Little did we know that the uproar that we would face now. Many of the residents use the front gate daily, and some of us use the small gate to go in and out for walks and to walk our dogs. The tranquility and pleasure of going in and out would be another eyesore and much higher than the old cars and the boats that are there now in the space where the cell tower would go and a major health threat. Remember, cell phones can be turned off. They can be put away. But you cannot do that to a cell tower. I ask you to vote no on the cell tower placement in order to keep Sunrise Terrace Mobile Home Park ours and your slice of heaven and free from the big tech companies. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Please.
I have a question. You mentioned Dorothy Poe. I live at Sunrise. You mentioned that it would be about thirty-five percent effectiveness of the cell tower. Okay, what about in five years, ten years, when they say, oh, we need to up the we need to up the power? What is the effect gonna be then? Is it gonna be seventy? I mean, are we gonna be bombarded with that much more? You know, they did mention that they would possibly want to up the power later down the road. Well, I wanna know what the effect is then to all of us.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Mason. I live in Sunrise Terrace. I'm right at the gate. And I just wanted to piggyback on what Bob had said and what Ms. Poe had said, and that is that they can add more towers. They can up the strength. All these things we've discussed and all the documents they've shown us are just for right now. But they don't need our permission, and they don't need us to know when they wanna go up and just beef everything up. And we have no control over that. Once it goes in, it's in, and it can expand. So please, 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 please stop it now. Have it moved somewhere where there aren't neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Robert Swanson, and my wife's name is Cheryl. We moved into Sunrise Terrace in April of twenty-two. One of the reasons we moved there is because of its visual attractiveness. One thing you'll notice when you drive into Sunrise Terrace, there's no telephone poles. It's purposely made to be visually very attractive. This thing that's being proposed will be a huge eyesore. And I did have some notes I was gonna read, but everybody's covered what I already feel that it would be detrimental to some people's health. And if it's even detrimental to one or two people's health, that's enough to say no to it, in my opinion, and I would ask that you do that. And also, the financial potential of us having decreased property values. Perception is reality. That's a phrase that I've heard lately. So if somebody believes that, and they come looking at our property, they go, well, it's got a cell tower. I'm not gonna offer them full price. And those are our concerns, and we hope that you deny this application.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jane Roach, and I also live in Sunrise Terrace. Some years back, Mr. Hodges put a fence around that parking area, and he told us, don't worry. It'll be kept clean. There won't be any problem there. Well, before long, we got the cars, we got the boats, we got the gizmos. Look at this. Everybody's going, mmm-hmm. Then we got the covers around it. Then we got the holes in it. Then the gates were left open. It was wonderful to look at. Do you all realize that Sunrise Terrace is fifty years old? And it's gorgeous. We work really, really hard to keep it looking that way. Our moniker is the premier mobile home park on the central coast. And for Mr. Hodges to skate with a hundred thousand dollars a year, ostensibly, ostensibly, in rent, while we lose money for sales or possible loss of sales is beyond the beyond. It may not be a health hazard for people to live in a circle with a cell tower, but why is it that they don't wanna put around schools? Why? But they don't. So I'm gonna paraphrase President Biden and just say, don't.
Thank you.
I'll make a quick. My name is Carol Snow, and I live in Sunrise Terrace. And I have a question, since I understand this was the question we were supposed to be asking. Why would you show up without the evidence? You tell us that it's not hazardous to our health, and yet you present no factual material. Why is that? Don't you think we deserve that? Second of all, you show a map with a big white area around this tower, and then the parts that start becoming diseased, whatever you wanna call it, impacted, that's not even on your map. Oh, well, that's thirty-nine percent. I'm a healthcare professional. I don't understand what you mean when you say thirty-nine percent. You didn't present it at all, and I'm ashamed that you showed up this way. It certainly didn't sway any of us that I've seen. We need the facts and the truth, and I don't see that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, folks. My name is Tom Knoll. I live over on Bambi Court, which is south of the Victorian. Outside of the weekend parties and marriages there, what the hell, you know, it's not too bad. But I agree with everybody here, you know, the health and the money and all that, but how much is Verizon paying the people to put their cellphone tower on? Who's the low bidder? Number two, I asked Verizon today, where's your coverage? You know, we don't have internet here for them. The only place Verizon has internet is on the East Coast. They wanna put up a cell tower here to get us better service? Get us better service. That's all I gotta say. You know, they're in for the money. Period.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like?
Hi, my name's Renang Raffino, and I'm new to Sunrise Terrace as of twenty-two. I love Sunrise Terrace. You guys should come visit because you might end up there one day. I had I have this planned thing to talk about, but I wanna tell you it's an exquisite part. Everyone there, we're friends, we're neighbors, we're real people, and we count. We count. Go put your cellphone tower somewhere else, guys. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Colgate. I have a couple of questions. I live in Sunrise Terrace, but I don't like some of the people that have been here tonight. Not as close to the tower. I am up on Longdon Court, which is probably altitude-wise above where the tower is going to be. And with the way that these gentlemen had asked or had described how it's the bad problems with the radiation are coming sort of like a sprinkler. I'm above where that sprinkler is going to be. And I find that that the map itself is wholly, completely inadequate that they gave us. It should cover all of the, or most of the area, at least a half a mile away from where that tower is. This night has gotten me to sort of look back at when I was an IRS agent, which was my first job out of college. Something like that, I would be submitting to these gentlemen, I need a bigger map, and failing that, I would be preparing a form that the next person they would be talking to would be, hi, I'm Agent Smith from the Criminal Investigations Division. You have the right to remain silent. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, please. It's fine. You'll be fine. I'm not scary.
Hi, I don't live at the terrace, but I've been taking care of my mom at the houses that are across the street from it, and I have a lot of really awesome elderly neighbors that have really fragile health, and they're all really concerned too. And I just wanted to voice that since they're not here. A lot of them struggle to walk and do things, so I just wanted to put that out. Actually, I did have a question. The, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm not like science. The effects, I've can you find out the effects? I've heard stuff about the effects actually being accumulative. So I mean, I know the FCC thing is super ancient, and like I've heard if it was revised, it would be classified differently, like it's like a level one, like carcinogen or something. I don't know if you have the power to ask about those things and the cumulative effect. And also, I like about it affecting kids as well, because I think it actually affects everybody. Anyway, that's, yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
What was your name, ma'am? Sorry, Allison. Thank you.
Hi. Hello. I'm Joan Garrett. I don't actually live at Sunrise Terrace. I live across the street at a little development called Ninety-Six Homes, if that's little. It's called Valley Gardens. We feel like we are in the line of fire, as are the Sunrise and the Tiger Tail, Bambi Court areas. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood, and I am concerned for our next generation. I would like to leave them what we should leave them, the best of the best. We're not doing that. And I think that's appalling. I think we can do better. I think we need to fight this. I really don't think that Verizon cares about our health, our property values. They don't care about any of that. That's why we have to care. That's why we have to fight. And I'm hoping, and hoping that the papers I've submitted, a lot of papers tonight, today, I've petitioned fifty people in my neighborhood of Ninety-Six who are very, very opposed to what the proposal is. So I don't know if I can leave that with somebody here now.
Thank you.
I thank everybody for being here. My goodness. This is what it takes to make a better town and a better country.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jack Gill. My wife and I moved into Sunrise Terrace about a year ago, a little over a year ago. And we're sixty-four years old, so, God willing, we're gonna be here for the long haul and hopefully at least another twenty years. So we will have the long-term exposure to this if they do go with this site. And obviously, the church that David talking about is a viable place, and they do want it. But I didn't see anything, I didn't see anything from these gentlemen to show us. They showed us how, if it was put, or they're proposing to put it, how it would affect the the service, but they showed nothing from an alternative site, as if it was it was never gonna be considered an alternative site. I mean, that's my feeling on it, and I I know you guys have heard a lot tonight. You've heard the voice of your city, and I hope you consider it.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Peter Hunt, and I live in Sunrise Terrace. In my profession, I built a skip, and the amount of shielding that we had put in to keep all the radiation out was fantastic. I'm just wondering, this is a question, is there anything we can do personally to insulate our homes if this goes in? I mean, we can't have aluminum foil on our windows due to the due to the regulations at the park, but other than that, I don't know. Everything was sealed, shielded, and grounded. And just if there's anything you can do to mitigate this a little bit more, whatever, if you could address that, I mean, if it's gonna end up going in, a lot of us are gonna be trying to figure out an alternative. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm George Roach, and I live in Sunrise. And I was going through the history of this project, and I was a little surprised to see that nowhere was it mentioned that any of the And I was a little surprised to see that no, it wasn't mentioned that any of the, uh. Residents in the area were noticed about this project back in, uh, December. It went to the Architectural Committee. And I haven't seen it noticed any of the people here specifically. Uh, with any specific distances, so I don't know if that's because it's considered within the FCC rules. But it seems that there should have been notes.
Thank you, sir.
Take a minute to, to, Mike, carry it again, uh, to just point out.
Did you already make comments?
I did, but can I just point out the packet I gave you? Cause it, it has information.
Was it one of the, the emails that were submitted?
No, the packet that I brought up today.
Okay, are you going to submit that to us at some point?
Yeah, we have, um, we have a copy. For each of the members of the commission.
We're going to pass that out.
The issue was one of the items we received, we only got three copies up, so.
Well, luckily, there's only three of us.
We do need to keep a copy for the record.
Okay, I'll, yeah, I can give mine back as well.
So, I just wanted to explain what it was. I, I got in contact with, uh, Professor Huru at, uh.
Could you speak into the mic?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I got in contact with the Professor Huru. And he's a professor of toxicology and health effects of mag, of electromagnetism. At, uh. And, uh, in the Department of Surgery at McGill University in Montreal, Canada. And so he pointed me to a study that the, uh, that New Hampshire did in twenty-twenty. Uh, and so I'd be happy to send, uh, the full study. It's, it's, it's under four hundred pages, just under four hundred pages. And, uh, so he, he also pointed out, because I asked him, what, 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 you know, what, what's the, the best practices? So he pointed to a recommendation in there for cell towers and this, this group, uh, for, um. New Hampshire, basically, uh, they're, uh. It recommends a setback of five hundred meters. From residential area, which is the equivalent of sixteen hundred and forty feet. And so I, and I, it's, 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 um, talked about in Appendix K. That I gave to you, and that's part of that study, that four hundred page study. So I just wanted to make sure that you, you knew about it.
Thank you so much. Was there, oh, please.
Um, hello, my name is Joanna Phillips. And, um, I'm thirty years old, so I'm bringing down the age just a little bit. Um, I was born and raised and still currently live on Leanna Drive, uh, in Valley Gardens, which is across the street from the Victorian Inn. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I felt compelled to, so here I am speaking at my first city council meeting.
Planning Commission.
Um, I am the full-time caregiver for my sixty-nine-year-old parent who suffered a stroke last year and now has many health issues. My apologies. Um, I work from home full-time. And my internet speed is perfectly adequate, and I have never found a significant gap in service. I am here representing the young adults and parents with young children who are not able to be here tonight, who live in Valley Gardens. Who also signed a petition against the cell tower and are very hesitant and wary about what could potentially happen to their young families? And how it could impact their property values. I worry for all of our futures and my own future regarding property values, values and negative health impacts. I am so thankful for the older generation here who are raising their voices, and I'm grateful for, grateful to all of you. For giving us this opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Storton, and I too live in Sunrise Terrace. I'd like to thank the, um, Planning Commission for their good questions. It looks like they really prepared to, uh. Talk about this issue. I do have a couple of questions. Is it possible for Aurora Grande to change its distance requirements at this point? Uh, even though we now have this. Awful offer. Um, can we change this and prevent this from going through? That would be one of my questions. Um, it looks like from what I studied. On the slides that we're going to have very little power or, or say in what happens with this. And if we don't decide, they're going to sue us. That's what it looks like to me. I don't, I don't know if I'm right or wrong. And, and also I would like to point out that I bet the men from Horizon. Don't want their parents to live in this kind of situation with this ugly water tower. And I bet they don't want it near their house either, within eighty feet. So anyway, all I have is basic questions, and I know this is causing. A lot of stress and stress causes health problems. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the room like to make public comment tonight?
All right, I am a, uh, repeat offender here.
See that.
And I would like to applaud the, uh, commission. Uh, for their preparedness and their questions and, uh, having been at this podium before and gotten different responses. I applaud.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other, uh, comments that would like to be made in the room tonight? Okay, I'm going to go over to Zoom at this point, um, so you'll have, I guess, one more chance to decide if you want to make comments after Zoom. But, um, I'll go over to Zoom right now.
If any member of the public on Zoom would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. The raise hand button is at the bottom of your screen. So far, we have one speaker.
Thank you.
Carrie and Nancy Boyle. Please go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you. Um, my name is Nancy Boyle, and I represent, um, the Valley Gardens in Aurora Grande, California. I submitted a letter to, um, Shayna today. Um, with some, um, attachments for some articles that we had. Uh, looked on at, uh, on Google with mostly importantly, um, with, uh, the fire department in California. And their two G, five G exposure levels and the contaminants that they have been experiencing. And I just wanted to call that to attention of how. Um, there is no, um, level of, um. What do you call it? Updates on any kind of FCC regulations? And just if you've received the letter and if you want me to read it or not, I would love to read it. It's kind of lengthy, but that's up to you.
We, we did receive it. Um, I can answer that right now, and we received it earlier today, so it was thoroughly read through. Thank you.
So many, so much information on, uh, radiation, but I'm, I'm also wanting to be. Let you all know that, um, Valley Gardens and the duplexes and Sunrise Terrace, there's so much. Uh, densely population and, um, data that can confirm of how much damage it can do. With even two G cell towers. And the liabilities, and it's just kind of alarming, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to make a public comment on this item?
If there's any other speakers on Zoom, please raise your hand now. The raise hand button is at the bottom of your screen. I'll give it just a moment. Okay, Madam Chair, there are no more speakers on Zoom.
Thank you. Last chance for anyone in the room.
Have I heard, have I heard it said I want to use the rest of my time, Barber Hill or Aurora Grande? I have one quick question, and I keep hearing it, uh, brought up. Is it correct that if Verizon chooses to add other uses to this tower, other users? That they can do this at their discretion, once this, once the tower is in place? That we have no, I mean, we're, we're looking at streaming, we're looking at all kinds of things, and if they, if they can also add AT&amp;T and all of that. What are the ramifications of that? For all of us. My main concern is financial value, because I'm kind of up the hill. I'm probably right even where, for, for where the tower was going to be. Sending, because we are on a hillside. And I suspect I'm right in the line of fire, but I haven't looked at that and I'm not going to worry about it. I am worried about selling my place because I'm close to being, to needing to be in a long-term care home. So, that whole idea of, once it's in, it's open season. And I had, that hadn't even crossed my mind until tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, please. I'm going to discourage repeat comments if I could, just because I.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Both of you were really quick before, so.
I'll make it very short, and I'm very grateful for your consideration and listening to everyone. You can tell we're worried. Um, I want to point out an issue that came up, um. Oh, wait a minute, is this the one? Is this the one? Oh, here it was. Got it. It was stated, okay, there was a memo that, um, Andrew. Wrote. Let me just read this. I, I picked this up in, in, um, in, from another individual. Anyway, there was a statement that was contained. Here it is, and thank you. In the December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three Architecture Review Committee meeting. Mem, and I'll quote this. Members of the Staff Advisory Committee reviewed the proposal to include representatives from the city's Public Works Department. Engineering Division and Planning Division. It was stated that members of the SAC. That's the Staff Advisory Committee, were supportive of the project as proposed while maintaining. Reservations regarding the proximity of the project surrounding residential areas. I would like to have, I'm going to ask the question, is it possible for someone to make an evaluation of that? And to reconsider that you had concerns from your own people, Public Works, Engineering, Planning? We'd like to have that re, re, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? Re. Yeah, reevaluated so that we really, we need your help. You're already concerned. We appreciate you looking into it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Towing the line here.
It's a fact that I forgot to add, and I promise I won't cry, won't cry, I won't think of Arthur. Uh, my friend lives at twenty-eight fifty Peaceful Point. And that was one of the alternative sites that they said they had approached. He never got approached. He happens to have an AT&amp;T cell, uh, cell tower on his property. It beams out from that mesa across. I think it does a pretty good job. I've got AT&amp;T and it's great. So that's what I wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Are there any new public comments that?
My name is Dennis Restiga, and I live at Sunrise Terrace. I think there's one thing that the Planning Commission needs to take into consideration. Maybe the two gentlemen could address the issue. From what I'm hearing, and I don't want to reiterate on what's been said. But my understanding is that radio frequencies travel at a certain level. Uh, there's been no site map presented by any of the people here on elevation. And if you take into consideration Sunrise Terrace, it's elevated far beyond where the cell tower, uh, reaches. You made mention to the fact that the church wasn't one of your considerations because of the hill, mountain, whatever you want to consider it. Behind it. But we have the same issue. So that may be something that the council may take into consideration as well. A site map hasn't been presented to you on a flat level, yes, but not in elevation.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
My name's Daryl Snow. I live at Sunrise Terrace. I have a throat problem. I have a chest problem. I have an internal problem. And I have a problem here. When they first got up to speak, they were talking about going to the church and checking with the property. I suggest you go back to the church. The guy said, call them. They're good to see you. Okay? That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any further public comment this evening on this item? Okay, going once, going twice. I'm going to close public comment on this item. Um, and. Reevaluate where I'm at. Um, I know that there were several questions raised, so can we answer some of those questions? Is that okay before we move on? Yeah, and if I miss any, please jump in. Um, I think the first one was about general population. Um, what does that mean? And if we need to clarification.
Yeah, there's a, there's a few questions that are, um, for Verizon.
And this might be for them.
Yeah, we can maybe take a few of those.
Yeah.
When RF safety stuff is conducted, it utilizes worst-case scenario. The powers that are utilized at the cell site are the maximum powers possible out of the radio. They cannot be turned up any higher. If we do do something. To. Replace radios or something, then we have to run new RF mission reports. However, in, in regards to age covered. I'm going to check that one actually to our gentleman who's an expert on it, who's on the phone.
Tech.
Yes. So, uh, so the, the FCC, uh, sets two, actually two guidelines. One for occupational workers, people like myself who works in and around antennas. And one for the general population. Now, the, the one. The one for general population is five times more stringent. And it's got a factor of fifty times built in, safety factor built in. Of what scientific knowledge of the level that we could cause adverse health effects. And so the general population applies to everyone, everyone here at the meeting today. Um, it applies to. Individuals of all, uh, health, um. All, all ages and varying, varying health status as well. So, yes, the, the limit that we use for, for our calculations for, uh, a study is based on. Continuous exposure for, for general population.
Thank you, Mr. Tech. Thank you. Um, the next question. Sorry for my specifics. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Chair, um, to put it simply. The general. Exposure limits are for the general public, everybody. The other level of requirements is what's called occupational. It's less, it's less stringent, because those people are trained to be around.
With PPE, that kind of thing.
So that's, that's why it's, there's a different, the, what Mr., what Durang was saying is that the. The report uses the most stringent standard.
That makes sense. Thank you. Um, the next question that I had written down, written down was, um, page four of the PowerPoint noticed that we might have some citing rights? I don't know if we need more clarification from the person who asked that, or if they're even here, or if anyone noted what that question was.
So, um, I, I, it's not, it doesn't have to do with staff presentation. I believe what that is referencing is actually from our legal counsel's presentation.
Got it.
Regarding what purview the city actually has in regards to citing requirements.
Okay.
So if Bennett is still on the line, then.
Yeah, thank you, Shayna. Um, yeah, I believe the statement is in reference to my slide on, uh, section two fifty-three. Of the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six. Um, the subsection C seven is titled Preservation of Local Zoning Authority. And generally, it is intended to, um, provide, I'll, I'll read an excerpt from here. Except as provided in this paragraph, nothing in this chapter shall limit or affect the authority of a state or local government or instrument. Mentality thereof. Over decisions regarding the placement, construction and modification of personal wireless services, facilities. The limitations are are those that I described bef- uh, before in my presentation. Um, the largest one being that the city cannot take an action that will prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting the provision of professional wireless services. Generally, what this means is that the city has authority over the citing of wireless facilities and can create standards, uh, location standards, design requirements and other setbacks and other height limits and other requirements. Um, that the city has already already exercised in its code and its guidelines. The city has an ability to modify those. Uh, there was a follow-up question regarding whether or not the city can adjust its setbacks uh and whether or not that would apply to this application. The city's code requirements and existing regulations are locked in at the moment the application is filed. Any modification to the city's rules or regulations would apply to any um applications submitted after those new rules are effective.
Thank you. Okay, um. Can, the next question that I had written down was, can other providers attach to the tower when ha- when this happens? Or what happens when this occurs? Does it change emissions? Does it have to go back in front of us, et cetera? I guess that's both of you, questions for both staff as well as Verizon.
Uh, let me address it quickly, uh, just on the staff side. Um, there, the Verizon has the ability to add additional users, um, either as a co-location or as an eligible facilities request. If, then, if the application to add a new user or new antennas qualifies as an eligible facilities request, federal law provides the city has no discretion and must approve that uh request to modify or add or co-locate certain qualifying equipment. Um, there is more discretion for the city uh to review and uh co-location requests that do not qualify as eligible facilities requests. Um, but I uh, at that point, I'll leave it up to Verizon to discuss whether or not they have any existing plans to add additional users to the site. Uh, the one-
Can I, can I ask one more question from you? What is an eligible eligible request?
So that is a specific uh law based in the twenty-twelve Middle Class Tax Relief Act. It it provides that certain modifications to a wireless facility that do not substantially change the physical dimensions of the facility. And keep in mind that nearly everything I mentioned has its own definition in federal law. Um, would uh that, so long as it does not uh constitute substantial change, the city has no discretion and must approve it.
And substantial change is not like defined, it's essentially whatever.
It's specifically defined as uh depending on the type of facility, whether it's in the public right of way, whether it's a tower, whether it's a uh building mounted, it has limits based on how much uh increases in height, uh protrusions from the tower, um, a- among another, among many other qualifications. When there is additional changes to a facility, uh, including the addition of a new user, the, they're required to conduct a new RF analysis that looks at the cumulative impacts of all the facilities and all the RF emitting devices in at that site. Um, but I'll leave it up to Verizon to better describe how they conduct their cumulative uh analysis.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, please.
There is a a couple of questions in that, that question in that response. Um, with regard to, and the attorney could, if he wants to correct me, he can. The term that's commonly used to do it is on a co-location to be an eligible facilities for an eligible facilities request on a stealth structure, which is what this is, is you could not defeat the steffing. Uh, the city's code notes that this would, the facility would conceal all of the antennas. So as a water tank, there was a a comment earlier about no water in the water tank. Um, get water, the antennas would be in the water tank, it couldn't be filled with water. It was, it was amusing. The, with the antennas inside, there is not enough space inside of the water tank to support any antennas from a competing carrier.
Got it. So this site is kind of limited to what it is.
So if this was, say, a a pine tree or or a faux tree of that type, then there is, because you could have the antennas here with the branching around it, you could have antennas here. This type of structure is really designed, and there are water tanks that are taller and larger. This one is designed for a single carrier. There's no room for another carrier. If another carrier came co-located, uh, I would expect staff to say, well, you're defeating the steffing because we could see the antennas on the legs, so we could see that. And thus deem it not to be an eligible facilities request.
Okay. Can I, can I piggyback on that question just to clarify? Because it is a question I had from earlier when we were talking about the E, the expansions order for the EFRs. Um, so categorically, it's off the table that a wider faux tower would would be installed on that same structure. You know, saying like, I don't want you to have a circle here and then just build a wider one to fit more.
We.
Uh, is that, is that even an option?
I I I do understand what you're saying, and it's it's something that 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 planners at jurisdictions and applicants like myself wrestle with. Is a structure is built and then when you increase its size so much, so even if it was a monocle, you increase it so much to where everything's exposed. Well, the original selfing was nothing. It was all exposed. We could add more and but you reach a point where the tower will no longer support it at all, needs to be replaced. That's eliminated from the EFR category.
Okay.
So that goes off the table.
Okay.
So for us to say, make this very large, the loading of the structure would not support it.
The loading would not support it. Okay.
Tower would be going away and I'm sure staff would say, well, you're not modifying a tower, you're replacing a tower. That's a different category. And I know that, that's what we get told by cities all the time in discussions that we have.
Okay, I just, you know, we've had co-location um examples come before us before as a commission where ostensibly the the additional antennas from a separate carrier were not necessarily very large. And so I just want to make sure that that we're asking the question of, okay, well, if it's only one or two feet wider in each direction, well, it it might be able to support that. And I don't want to not have asked that question.
It's, it's, it's true. Then if it was a co-location that was coming before the commission, by definition, it's not an eligible facilities request because that would be a ministerial action.
Right. And that that's what I'm asking, is that, is that even an option? Is that something that 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 base as designed right now could support?
No, it could not.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
There was a, the question with regard to cumulative effects of emissions with co-locating carriers.
Please.
The, I'd like Durang to answer that. Discuss cumul- cumulative effects, not only of co-location, but cumulative effects with other transmitters throughout the surrounding environment.
And if you want to add time into that too, cumulative effects over time, it would be great.
And I think you could answer that question and probably at the same time would be pertinent to answer the question regarding uh set standards versus a set level and how the law is written on that, Durang?
Uh, yes, um, well, first, if there is, there was another carrier that came on to this facility, then yes. Um, a new study would have to be done and would have to look at the specifics exactly the same way as as we we did this one. And the the effects would be the cumulative. So right now, like Dwayne was mentioning, you've got low band, you've got uh medium band. And uh, so when the study looks at it, it looks at all the frequencies transmitted at the same time and all the time. And so that is, um, that is, like I said, it's not realistic, but it is the the upper limit. Now, as far as the duration of time, the the general population is considered safe for continuous exposure. You don't need to, the general population does not need to know about time averaging, need to know, uh, need to have to worry about EMF, uh, because that is what the limit is set for. So that's why there is less stringent for occupational folks like myself that work around the antennas, because there's time averaging that we need to consider to to make sure we're below the limits. But so for continuous, for general population, it is um, is considered continuous.
Thank you.
Durang, Durang, I I think they were talking about cumulative effects such as ionized radiation versus non-ionizing radiation. Could you speak a little bit to that?
Oh, sure. Um, well, first, it's important to understand the difference between ionizing versus non-ionizing. So I, ionizing, well, first of all, non-ionizing occurs at low frequency at direct current, static, all the way up to, all the way up to, um, I want to say, let me um, let's see, um, almost up to, up to, upper microwave region and it close to infrared. And up to even uh radi- uh, even visible light. So those are really a a a wide range of of frequencies that that produces non-ionizing. And non-ionizing rate emission means that it doesn't have enough power to to um to cause permanent damage. Uh, it basically excites your molecules so that it produces heat. And that's very old, uh, very old science. We know that. Whereas ionizing emissions are in the really higher, most higher frequencies in the ultraviolet um, frequency bands uh that are produced by by other, um, say cosmic rays, gamma rays, for example, are those like medical X-ray machines? Those produces ionizing emission and they could cause, obviously, the ones that are uh emitted from from radioactive materials like the atomic bomb. Those are completely different type of emissions. So uh, back to our, to RF, RF is in the middle of, the middle of the non-ionizing emission spectrum. So it is, um, it does not give you, it does not, so the reason that the time averaging works for people like us is that for people, occupational workers, is that it doesn't have cumulative effects. Uh, meaning that when you go into, it does not, um, it doesn't cause permanent, um, I guess, damage, if you will. So that's why we can work in a really high RF field and then get away from it so that, and then go back and work in it again. So you can do that all day long, twenty-four seven, and not have a cumulative uh effects. I hope that makes some sense.
Somewhat. I'm not a scientist.
I I'm not either, but I I hear it all the time. Um, it could be summarized simply as all the emissions from carrier sources, other sources are looked at and must comply with the standard. So there's not separate, another carrier is not separate from this one. They get stacked on top of each other. The standard looks at all of them and says, does this comply?
Yes.
And the answer is yes.
Thank you. Um, I think this question is actually per staff. Where all the homes in Sunrise Terrace noticed were both this, the planning commission meeting, and I don't, I don't know if they have to be noticed for us, but.
I can speak to that. So, um, there is no standard for noticing for the Architectural Review Committee. Um, so there was no noticing done at that time. Um, in terms of noticing procedures for a conditional use permit, those are pretty stringent and those are laid out in our municipal code. Um, I actually went above and beyond the noticing requirements and I contacted the the um, Mobile Home Park President, um, three weeks ago per, hmm, something like that, um, in advance. Um, and I contacted him as a courtesy notice because I understood that um, the three hundred foot radius as described by our municipal code would not capture everyone who would be interested in this project. Um, I worked hard to notify people that I thought would be interested. Um, but of course, I'm not really able to capture every single person who I think would probably want to speak on this topic. Um,
There were the notices like postcard, like what did they?
Right. So, um, the noticing requirement for our municipal code, which is the three hundred foot radius from the project site, um, that is a postcard that states the project information and the um, the upcoming meeting information. That's also what is posted on our website, um, in the Tribune and at the project site itself. You'll notice it along um Valley Road. And, um, yeah, so it's it's in a postcard format, but my understanding is that, um, the previous Sunrise Terrace President Mark McHugh released um a pamphlet, um, or a, I I guess a flyer. And, um, that's how Sunrise Terrace residents were notified. Um, part of the reason why I moved to notify more people was because of, um, kind of the the standards of our municipal code require that homeowners, property owners are notified. Um, and part, one thing that I was concerned about as a project manager was that, um, residents who don't own their homes might also be interested, I would imagine. I, I own my home, I would be interested as well.
We run into that problem quite.
Chair, Chair Mayor Vila, if I could clarify.
Yes, please.
So municipal code requires that property owners within three hundred feet of a project site are notified. The Sunrise Terrace Park is one single parcel. So the code requires that we send one notice to the HOA. So it was staff's intent to overnotice and engage with residents as early as possible, um, to have this dialogue, you know, in anticipation of this meeting and because we anticipated this, you know, this discussion. So
Right.
We wanted to involve the public and wanted to have that conversation um, in the weeks leading up instead of having it all just come out this evening.
Right.
Another, um, just another piece of that, um, is that as we were, um, receiving letters and emails, uh, we received a number through, uh, the city council members and mayor as well. Uh, we collected those, um, and we did an email blast uh before this meeting just to let folks know where to get the staff report uh and all of that as well. So that's an additional piece to that. Um, I do want to just
Yeah.
Kind of, um, uh, there's been, um, I I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Uh, there's been a lot of good, great comments tonight. Um, and it demonstrates, you know, how much people love AG and their community. I don't think we've had, I I know we haven't had this packed of the house since, uh, I've been here. Um, and, uh, I also just wanted to clarify the role of staff, uh, in the, in this, in this, um, item, um, including our attorney, Bennett Givens, who is part of staff. Um, you know, our charge is to review the project, um, and whether or not it meets our codes and regulations. Um, so as, as Bennett described, the city is quite limited in what we can do with the constraints put on our jurisdiction by state and federal law. Um, there are significant limitations on considering things like property values, alternate studies of radio frequency emissions, uh, radio frequency emissions if it meets, uh, their regulations. Um, and then, um, any action by the planning commission, and and I will let, I'll let Bennett fill in, uh, any any information here as well, but any action by the planning commission, including denial, must be accompanied by substantial evidence. Um, the, the challenge with that is that, uh, the application has met all of our requirements uh in our code. Um, it also, uh, the the faux water tower exceeds the city's requirements for tower design as well. Um, it's a stealth facility. It 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 conceals all of the antennas, wires and and transmission equipment. Um, so I just want to put that out. Um, and, uh, if there are any other questions for staff, uh, I think, I think we covered most of the ones that were directed towards staff. Uh, there was the question about, um, whether or not, uh, I think Bennett may have asked or answered it about our code, our existing code. Um, so we can't change the distance requirements or anything that's not already in our code. Um, that would be something that, you know, if the planning commission or staff or.
That wasn't going to be my question for you.
Right, or city council, um, mostly if, um, you know, determined that the city council wanted to take this up and maybe, uh, look at our telecommunications ordinance. Uh, that's something that could happen in the future.
That the city council would have to, um, basically say we would like to request, you know, we're requesting that we look at the telecommunications ordinance.
They would need to pro- provide staff with direction.
To do so.
And if that comes in the form of a new ordinance, then that ordinance would, um, be noticed. Um, it would go into the planning commission and then, uh, for a recommendation. It would go into the planning commission and then for a recommendation and on to the city council for eventual approval.
So that would need to, with, with the whole general plan that's coming up right now, that would not be part of it at all. It would be a separate thing or would the, the general plan look at the telecommunications ordinance?
The general plan update is two to, well, it's a three-year effort, really. We have a few years left here now on it. And as part of that, we'd be doing a development code update. So it could be incorporated into that. It probably depends on the urgency of, you know, whether or not this needs to come in before that.
Right.
You know, we, we will be looking at a development code update, but it will, it will span beyond the three-year general plan update. So the anticipation is that it's going to be at least three years from, from now, that would be in place.
Okay, thank you. I think that knocks off several questions on there. There was a question about how does everything work with properties at higher elevations? Or how that was looked at?
Thank you. That was, that was definitely something that we missed in the EME report. Not missed, but miscommunicating from a technical perspective. Those of us that have a good understanding of it sometimes do not speak to the general public as well as we should. Could you please bring up the, the coverage plots that are in the RF emissions report? The at antenna level one would be, okay, perfect. So what this shows is at the antenna level, it shows that there, the signal has dropped off at 90 feet from the site. So even if you're at the level of the antennas, after 90 feet, it meets the, the federal guidelines. So unless a property were to rise to 47 feet within 90 feet of the antennas, you're, you're not going to have any blue out there. So having looked at hundreds of these, I understand that, Durang understands that. And that's the reason it was limited to this area is because absolute worst possible case, which is you're at the antenna level, it only extends for 90 feet.
Thank you. Those were kind of the main questions that I had written down. Did you catch anything else?
No, not from the general comment or public comment, but I have questions for staff, but.
Go ahead.
No, I don't know if we have anything else from Commissioner Buchanan or.
Did you catch any questions that I missed?
Okay, yeah, the elevation one was the most recent. Okay, I'm just going to ask the question because it was, it was asked to me and I did not have an appropriate answer, having not studied our city's map nearly as much as I guess I could. Is there categorically no other non-residential zoned property to be considered within our city limits, specifically in the zone radius as shown by Verizon they're searching for to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish? Because I, I guess I'm, I'm grasping for straws for constituents who are very reasonably concerned for very valid things that I understand our hands are tied for some reasons, such as we can't base it off our emissions, we can't base it off home property values, we can't base it off health studies that the FCC has not taken into consideration. I get all that, but can you as staff tell us categorically, no, there are no other potential sites?
I, I don't think we can. That's something that Verizon does as part of their alternative site analysis. The requirements are pretty clear. They need to identify, and I'll let anybody fill in if they know more than this, but they need to identify at least four sites and make contact with those, those folks. But staff does not do an exhaustive search of property. I would probably kick back to Verizon in terms of that, that process they went through.
Yeah.
But, you know, there is, there are different zones out there and certainly that on a zoning level would allow these types of facilities.
I guess my, my explanation for this question, as far as my line of thought, is that my understanding is that the burden of proof is upon the applicant to show that they have given best efforts, right, to find the least intrusive location possible in their analysis. And what was submitted in the application, I don't see how we can accept what was submitted as best efforts. Because what is written is that there was one letter, no phone number, no phone calls. And to me, that speaks to bare minimum effort. Which, okay, I get why, I get why. It's the least expensive thing. We just, low hanging fruit, we're going to go there, put our efforts there. That being said, it's, it's incumbent upon us to say, hey, we don't, we don't believe that you tried your best. And I, while I do appreciate the explanation that was expanded upon while you were here tonight, you know, saying that, no, it was four months and we finally got a letter and in the meantime, you chose to move forward. I, I feel like if we can't, as a municipality, say, we don't accept it, we reject this particular application. Because we, we can show that there is a potentially available additional location, which at least partially St. John's is at this point, an applicable location and potentially other sites, meaning there are other feasible alternatives for you to pursue. I, I invite that, that dialogue. I invite that solution, like seeking. Those are, those are my thoughts. And, and I invite Bennett to please speak to that. What are we tied to not being able to do that either? Because it's not.
Yeah, certainly. So I think, I think what would be helpful is to kind of center the commission on what the alternate site analysis requirement is. So this comes from the city's guidelines from 2017. In section two subsection B2, as an application submittal requirement, and I'm going to read, this is a quote, technological information, number two. In explanation of site selection, reason the site was chosen over alternative sites. End quote. That is the entirety of the city's regulations and requirements for alternative site analysis. The Verizon has demonstrated, based on their testimony today and documents provided, that they have satisfied that application requirement.
Do we have a copy of this? Do we? Did we have a copy of it? What page is this on?
Mayor Trivia is attachment three and page 147 of your packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's page five of the checklist and citing requirements. The difficulty, as everyone's trying to locate that document, the difficulty with alternative site analysis in ordinances and other requirements is that it's hard to rebut from a city standpoint, it's hard to rebut a applicant's alternate site analysis without utilizing or hiring a specialist or other consultant to, to fact check the information provided. Additionally, with alternative sites, the rights are dependent upon third parties. And so just because a site could potentially be zoned in a favorable way or it could be located in a remote area that would please the public, that property owner may not want the, the carrier to be able to enter its property and operate a facility. In addition, there are other concerns by the carriers themselves and more technological interests about where signal propagation is going to be best. And that factors in a huge bit in their analysis of the alternative sites.
So long story short, our hands are tied here too. That was what I'm hearing. By our own code.
Yes, essentially, the, the code requirement that I referenced earlier and cited or read in full is the only alternate site analysis requirement that the city has currently. And it is in my opinion that Verizon has satisfied this requirement under the current guidelines.
Sorry, guys. Okay, we can't, we, we're not in a public comment period. I'm sorry. I can't allow the public comments during this time period. Did you have further?
No, I'm sorry. No. And those are, those are my questions. I have comments later, but I, those are my questions. Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if we received this, but just looking at this right here for the site information and the list of requirements that the, that the provider was supposed to give us. It says a location of all habitable structures within 500 feet of the proposed facility. Was that given in our report? Can you give us the page number?
Yes, so it's in the, it's in the site plan, the project plan attachment, which is attachment three, five.
Maybe page 134 of your packet.
Thank you. This, it's.
That's correct.
Detail. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Buchanan. Do you have any comments or questions?
Question, quick question for staff. Are there other cell towers in the city currently? I think there's one in Soto. Is there others?
Yes, so right now, every water tower that's currently on city property does have multiple cellular sites attached to it. That includes Hubner Lane, the Women's Club, Cuesta del Sol and Hillcrest.
Is there one in Soto or is there not? I thought.
There is, yes.
Yeah, Soto Sports Complex.
You were listing the water towers. I see. Got it. Okay.
And there's also a cell site at St. Barnabas Church.
Got it. Okay. As far as we know, you've never heard any complaints about those? Do you feel complaints about those?
I personally have not heard any complaints, but that does not mean that no complaints exist.
Sure. I don't have any other questions.
Do you have any comments that you want to make on item?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any other questions. I have a lot of thoughts on this. I'm angry at the federal and state governments for having so many prohibitions on localities, especially because they seem incredibly outdated. And they give large corporations such as Verizon even greater power over our community than they already have. I'm actually really frustrated that, that the applicant put us in this position. I think it's a disservice to our community and I'm disappointed in that. I do think that although we face these restrictions, the applicant is also supposed to demonstrate that they have chosen the least alternative means of filling coverage gaps and make a good faith effort. I do not believe that that good faith effort was made. I think it's very clear in our, in the things that we were given, that that good, good faith effort was not done. I don't think one letter is a good faith effort. I believe that there should have probably been some follow-up. There wasn't even a phone number listed, as I believe Commissioner Sakrison mentioned, within there for the, for the church. And they're clearly wanting this facility, you know, this thing on their site, which is just infuriating to me. Because we wouldn't have to be in this room doing this all right now if that was followed through. I think that our city code needs to be updated, clearly, with further regulations and further, we have things in our city code such as standalone towers may not be, may be considered only when the applicant reasonably demonstrates that the proposed facility cannot be placed on an existing building or structure. And that it should be encouraged on property zoned public facility. It states that in the code. That means those applicants, applications need to include that information. And I think, I, to me, it feels like that is stated in the code. I'm sure it could be argued by lawyers for eternity to get what that actually means. But to me, it's stated in the code. And I don't think the applicant has reasonably demonstrated that the proposed facility cannot be placed on something that is existing. This, it, our code also states that substantial landscaping or other screening should be provided to visually buffer any adjoining residential uses. We already went over that. This is not also happening. I also would not consider this project compatible with the surrounding architecture. If it was in the fields, maybe that a water tower would be, you know, compatible with the architecture, but it's, it's clear in the images that it's not. I mean, we can pretend, but it's not. I think there are reasonable, agreeable and feasible alternatives available, which is also something that's noted in there. And I think there were some real failures of communications for Verizon on the part, this part. And it just does not seem like they did their due diligence in this whole process. They probably thought, check, we got a new tower. Who cares about the people that live around it? I personally don't believe the applicant has met the requirements and I can't in good faith support this project. And those are my comments. At this time, I am going to entertain a motion.
Can I give some thoughts?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I thought you were.
No, I was done with questions, but I wanted to give you some, give a little bit of feedback. I apologize. I don't typically type out my thoughts ahead of time. But I've been typing as we have gone along and there, there are some things. So this is an item that clearly affects so many residents. And it frustrates me that you are left feeling lesser than. That has to be a terrible feeling and, and I apologize for anything that we could have done, although I'm not sure what we could have done in this scenario. But hearing from you all, reading all the letters and the comments submitted reinforces for me just how much all of these decisions, every application that comes across our city staff desks really does affect the people that live here, myself included. As a neighbor and a fellow property owner, I echo and empathize with a lot of your concerns. Like so many of you said, would you want one right outside your door? And my answer is no, I would not want one. I have children. I would not want them staring at a cell tower either. So no matter the age, I, I think we're on the same page there. We are being told that there are so many reasons why legally we as a city cannot deny this application. I do have faith in our legal counsel. I appreciate them. Thank you, Bennett, for, for your work. I appreciate the efforts put forth by city staff. This is not easy. This is not easy, sitting there and feeling like some people are attacking you for just doing your job. I, I even feel a little bit for you sometimes because you're just a representative. You have essentially become the big bad corporation. And for that, I apologize because there has been some animosity that's been flung at you that I don't feel is necessarily deserved by you as an individual. That's not right either. That is not decorum. That's not right either. That is not decorum. And, and I encourage everybody that comes to speak at these meetings to, to remind themselves that we are all humans doing a job to the best of our ability. So I apologize for any misspeaking or, or tone that you may have received from, from us. Um, at least from me. I can't apologize for other people. I can apologize for myself. Um, I understand also that we are under terribly short timeline with this shot clock um, to make our decision. And to some extent, it feels like we are lawfully bound to a scenario that came to us as a foregone conclusion, and that is beyond frustrating. That makes me want to scream because essentially we're being told we have no more rights. On top of which, for all intents and purposes, we are not able to make decisions on every single level, at the state and federal level, like they're all saying the same thing. So I, I keep trying to ask for a different solution and finding the workaround. I have been wrestling with this for days and scouring through and trying to, to contact people. I was very frustrated at the, the answer of the single letter and the no phone number when a three-second Google search and a subsequent dial on my phone had a person named Pam from the office at Saint John's answering and saying, what? There's a meeting, what time? Yes, we will have someone be there. We are interested. I, that's frustrating for me because that to me shows that there wasn't due diligence. It's, I can't imagine to know all of the appropriate locations, and I understand that it would now be kicked back to Verizon to, to search out and find another suitable location, and that is, if we're being honest, probably very unlikely because it doesn't make sense financially for you to do so when you have a location that you probably can build upon. But I, I guess I'm beseeching on the behalf of so many people, myself included, to say that once this is done, we can't just undo it. So I'm asking us to try to be more thorough, and I don't know that there's a strong or even a weak judicial case here for our denial. And I understand the pressure of the shot clock. Like I said, all I can say is I know that it's not in our best interest to proceed with the proposed conditional use permit as it is currently written on the application. Um, I I can't, I can't in good conscience support this particular application as written. I'm not anti-growth. I understand that we need communication. I get frustrated just like the next person when my phone call gets dropped. I'm, I have terrible service from Verizon in my own home. I am one of those people. While I don't live near Sunrise Terrace, I, I'm still in AGI. I, I would love more service too, but not at just any cost. And, and I think that that's the, the line that I'm trying to ask us to toe, to factor in the needs and the wants of our constituents. Um, my firm belief is that we as a commission are duty-bound to do what we've been tasked to do, which is plan and advise our city council with what we think is the appropriate move going forward. We don't actually get a final say in, in a lot of things, but I don't believe this was thoroughly enough done. Um, that being said, what we left for the foreseeable future is the conversations that were started tonight or that you have been having among yourselves over the past several weeks. This level of engagement is what is required if you want things to go the way you want them to go so that we don't always have to be reactionary at the very end of the process. Say, hey, well, wait a second, why don't we have any rights? That should be frustrating. So I'm gonna use this little moment to also remind you of a couple things. You, some of you are saying you don't have many years left. Others, if you're saying you might have another twenty, thirty years left. Bravo. This is an election year. You can affect change because at the state and federal level, those are the people that appoint FCC regulators that make these rules. So if this is something that you care about for yourselves, for your children, your grandchildren, everybody around you, you, you absolutely can make your voice heard. At the local level, I don't know if, if you all got this in the mail, but you should have, or you will. This right here is the city, the city staff inviting you to please come. Tell us when it's even convenient for you, but come and tell us what you want changed in the code. I mean, it can't get more specific than that. I, I'm not a throw my hands up in the air, just be like, oh, I'm so, I'm just so sad and depressed. There's nothing we can do. I'm, I'm mad, but I do believe there is something we can do. If not about this situation, then the next one. We can be better at planning. So I invite you to, whether this turns out the way you had hoped tonight or not, do not give up because this won't be the last cell tower that goes up. It won't be the last application that comes before us that you might not like, whether it's for telecommunications or some other purpose. So please be involved. Please continue to have this dialogue. Thank you so much for your voice, and I know I'm on my soapbox. I will stop now.
You're fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, I, at this time, will entertain a motion. If anyone would like to make one. If not, I can. Huh? I am going to motion to disapprove um, conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero zero six. And I think that doesn't, I don't think we need to worry about the second part of it if it's being disapproved, so.
So bef- um, before we go forward, um, uh, I'm not sure Bennett wants to weigh in, but we would need, um, it would be extremely helpful and required actually to have findings for denial. Um, and so um, I had a couple maybe that came out of the discussion. I don't know, Bennett, if you want to weigh in first?
Yeah, certainly. Thanks, Brian. Um, yeah, before the vote, I just want to reiterate, you know, staff has reviewed the application. It's found that it complies with all regulations and requirements under the code and is recommended approval. Um, if the planning commission moves forward with a denial, we need a rational basis and substantial evidence to support the denial. Um, I similarly do not know what the basis would be. Um, and we need additional information, um, at that time. As the city's legal counsel, I have to advise you that, um, it is likely that a denial in the face of the findings by the staff that, um, the application qualifies and meets all requirements in a city code was likely to be litigated uh, by the applicant, and the city would be forced to defend that case. Um, at, at this phase, I do not anticipate that the city would be able to defend or be, or succeed in such litigation, and Verizon would likely prevail.
Would this also be something that would be moved to city council, though?
Uh, there is an ability under the code for, uh, anyone to appeal, uh, the decision to the city council. Um, and that.
And that doesn't require litigation, correct?
Uh, it would be, uh, an opportunity, uh, for the city to take one, the city council to be the final decision maker uh, on that. Once the city council makes a decision on appeal, if it is a denial, then litigation may follow.
But essentially, if we deny it, it would or, or approve it, either way, it could be appealed to city council, either way.
Correct.
And that could be by either party, essentially.
Yes.
Chairman Avili, I also just would like to highlight the fact that the city council has the authority to decide to appeal it themselves as well, absent from, from an opponent, so just to let everyone in the public know about that.
So my motion would need to be amended to include some of the items specifically that were listed. I had, um, the applicant did not make a good faith effort of identifying and evaluating alternatives or analyzing the specifics that the locality's code. Um, monopole and towers should be encouraged on property zone, oh, I'm sorry, wait. The standalone towers may be, may be considered only when the applicant reasonably demonstrates that the proposed facility cannot be placed on an existing building or structure. This was not demonstrated. Um,
I think you identified, um, D three regarding substantial landscaping.
Substantial landscaping or other screaming screenings were not provided to visually buffer the residential uses. I could go through the code very specifically.
Another one you mentioned was not compatible with surrounding architecture.
Not compatible with surrounding architecture.
And perhaps.
Tele, telecommunication facilities shall avoid any unreasonable interferes with views from neighboring properties. Um, telecommunication facilities are not any, allowed on any property with a residential land use designation, which I mean that I, it's a CUP to get to have residential use on office mixed use, so I to me, this could read at either way because technically they can be allowed with the CUP. We have a list of placement of facilities in a preferential preferential order. Excuse me, it's getting late, so I'm getting tired. Um, this location is the, like, the lowest priority, so I don't know if there was due diligence put in place for the applicant to look at any of the other alternatives that are higher on our list of preferential order. Okay. Standalone, I think I did say this, that they standalone towers may only be, may be considered only when the applicant reasonably demonstrates the proposed facility cannot be placed on an existing building or structure. I mean, that was, that was kind of a, a list of items from our, from the telecommunications requirements.
So do we have a, a second on that?
Yes, that was the motion.
All second.
Can we have a vote, or do we have any discussion? Sorry, I forgot that part.
Can you, so staff once more outline the path here. Is it likely here that Verizon would pursue a appeal to city council, or is it likely they would pursue litigation, and if so, what, um, liability to address that litigation would we be placing on the city?
Uh, the applicant would have to exhaust administrative remedies, so they would have to, uh, take advantage. They would have to file appeal to city council. Um, after city council's decision, uh, litigation may follow if it is a denial. Um, in, uh, in case of a denial at city council, um, the city is standing to uh, expend substantial sums to defend the action in legal fees. Um, and as I stated before, uh, the likelihood of success would be low, um, to defend the, uh, that case.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other? Sorry, turn that off. Is there any other discussion on this?
I, I just want to make sure that we, um, consider this as, as not just essentially punting it. That's not the goal here. We don't need to waste city staff's time or city council's time, or even the applicant's time, or the citizen's time in moving it along if, if it's going to lead to costly litigation. Um, that's not the goal. Um, that's, this is a very, this is just a tough situation.
Agreed. Um, and no more discussion. I'll take a vote.
Um, Chairman Avilia?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
No.
Um, the item is passed two to one, um, with the, that, and has been, um, I can't even think of the right word right now. Denied.
There is a fourteen-day appeal period. Uh, those are calendar days. Yes.
Okay. Um, thank you, sir. Thank you. We still have more items on our agenda that I can't seem to find right now, so I'm gonna take a break, if that's okay.
Chairman Avilia, if you wouldn't mind, are we taking a five-minute break?
Five-minute break. Sorry, I thought that's what I was doing. Thank you. Can't find my damn agenda. Can't believe you're still. Right now. Okay, um, I think that's been five minutes. It's probably been a little over. So thanks for sticking around. Those that did.
I'm so sorry. Support gentleman.
Um, so I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Um, and I'm going to immediately make a motion that we must to extend the meeting past ten PM, just in case that does happen. Um, I'll extend, I'll extend to eleven. I don't think we'll go that far, but I should we just do that? Or should I do it? I've never had to extend a meeting before, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
That works. Okay. Yeah, we'll just do that. And we don't, that doesn't mean we have to go that far, but gives us that time. Um, for the next item, I think we're on eight B, which I, right?
Chairman Ravilia, that needs, the motion needs a second then.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's, I'm so sorry. Do I have a second that? Do we need a vote too? Okay, can we vote please?
Chairman Ravilia?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Never done that before again. Um, the next item is eight B, which I actually have to recuse myself from because I am within five hundred feet of this development. Um, so I am going to leave um, and turn the meeting over to Commissioner Buchanan to run. Um, and I will be back.
Enjoy the room.
We're moving to A B. I believe the original agenda was C first, then A B, but.
Sorry about that.
CBA, we're going backwards. Okay.
Just swap sweet C and A.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Got it. Alright. So next up on the agenda is item A B, consideration of conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero seven and tend to track map twenty-two dash zero zero one. And finding that this action is exempt from review under the California Party and Prime Metro Quality Act pursuant to state guidelines, section fifteen three thirty-two located at um, one, two, five, five East Grand. The project representative is Matt Sabuba. Staff have a presentation?
We do. Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan, members of the public, uh, members of the planning commission. Uh, appreciate the opportunity to present this project, which I think um, could result in the creation of new housing units, which are desperately needed in the city. Um, I'm gonna start with a, a number of pictures, just sort of setting the, setting the setting for this project. Um, here you're taking a look at the Pacific Western Bank, which is the entrance to the property from Grand Avenue. Um, and then next you'll see I've taken a picture sort of from the middle of the project site, essentially where the guest parking will be located on your site plan. And then I have taken a series of pictures rotating clockwise um, to show the boundaries of the project. So you'll see um, in the left hand side of this picture, you've got Aldi and the Ori Grande Shopping Center. Um, and then further to the south, you have um, predominantly multifamily residential abutting this project and then transitioning towards single family. Um, again, you see this is looking towards the um, towards the east, um, towards the shopping center. Um, you've got the property to the rear here showing some of the vacant area in the property. Um, again, showing where the large percentage of the development will occur at the rear of the property. And then the um, properties just to the west um, are shown here in this picture. So I'm happy to go back to that at any point if there are specific questions about those, where I just wanted people to be aware of the project site, what it looks like and what's surrounding. Um, so as I mentioned, some of the surrounding uses, I'll sort of skip over that section, but um, this particular property is located within our gateway mixed use zone. Um, briefly, the pro- the purpose of that zone is to provide for a combination of financial institutions, retail uses, offices, commercial uses and multifamily uses. Generally speaking, um, this zone, along with our other mixed use zones, um, prefers that the commercial uses involved in the mixed use be located at either the front of the property or on the ground floor within a multi-story development. Um, both multifamily and mixed use developments in this zone require conditional use permit for approval. Um, specifically in the background for this project, in twenty twenty, the planning commission approved a lot line adjustment, which um, separated the bank from this vacant rear portion of the property. Um, and specifically, I think we've covered this recently before, but um, our code does allow a type of development that's called a city house development, which consists of three or more attached units with no unit above another. Um, but considers those seat house developments to be multifamily units. And so based on that um, definition and the description being presented here for this project, this particular project is classified as a multifamily housing project. Um, so quickly, I'll just show you from the plan, sort of what the architecture looks like. Um, we have three story units. Um, and I'll get a little bit more into materials and, and that sort of stuff as we continue. Um, the existing vacant parcel is just under a half acre. Um, and the applicant is proposing to split that half acre parcel into eight new residential lots, ranging in size from just over fifteen hundred square feet to just under five thousand. Um, each of the eight proposed multifamily units have identical floor plans. Um, each of the units is proposed to be just under thirty-five feet tall, um, which is nearing the maximum for the zone. And each of the floor plans include a three bedroom unit with three and a half baths, just under nineteen hundred square feet of floor space, uh, living space, I'm sorry, and elevator access between the first three floors. Um, so transitioning to the site plan, you can see here that the units are connected to a series of four of them on each side of the common driveway. Um, and then towards the north of the site, you can see where the proposed guest parking is located. Um, and talk a little bit more about some of that um, coming up as well. Um, so I did want to show you the elevations of the building um, from each of the different angles that have been presented by the architect. Um, I would just highlight that the architecture of your committee recommended some additional detailing on that, that white vertical stairway. Um, so we likely would see some changes made there potentially to increase the um, increase the amount of ornamentation or architecture on that part of the building to eliminate the blank wall. Um, also, I wanted to highlight that the staff advisory committee reviewed this project amid last year. Um, they did recommend approval. We've met a couple of different times with the fire department specifically about this project. Um, they had some concerns about access in and out of the site, uh, which we've addressed through conditions of approval applied to this project. Um, the staff advisory committee also recommended replacement of the existing drive approaches at the entrance on Grand um, to facility ADA compliance. Um, and more recently, the architecture review committee reviewed this project on the twenty-second of January. They were extremely supportive of the project, ultimately recommending unanimous approval. Um, they did recommend, as I mentioned, two um, two pieces here. So they would like to see additional um, roof material at the gable end of the roof deck. And I can show you that, what that looks like specifically as we get into the renderings a little bit later. And also some additional landscaping um, near the pathways surrounding the units, specifically the rear pathways, the pathways at the rear lots. Um, as I mentioned, that the fire departments, one of their primary concerns was access in and out of the site. So I wanted to show a picture here of the area that's prohibiting access at this time. So the overhang above the drive-through ATMs, um, as you can see, extends over the middle of the three lanes. Um, essentially, the fire department has determined that they would need the eaves of this overhang to be removed and shaved back essentially to the area above the first parking space in order for them to be able to safely drive a fire truck of that largest size through this project site. Um, and so speaking with the applicant, uh, that doesn't appear to be a significant issue. Um, from my understanding, the bank's only currently using the one lane. Um, and so that is included in the draft resolution as a condition of approval of part of this project. Um, this project has a number of points of consistency with our general plan, specifically with the land use and housing elements. Um, so I don't really want to read these to you, but um, they are included in your staff report and there's pretty good list of the elements that um, that this project meets or is consistent with. Um, so development standards for this project here are shown in this table. Essentially, in each case, the applicant has met or exceeded the required setbacks. I will say specifically with regards to the side yard setback, the abutting district is a residential district, it's multifamily. And so in cases like that, the applicant is required to meet the corresponding residential setback. Um, so in a typical development scenario, they would be able to build all the way to the property line. Um, but because the adjacent use is residential, they've actually got to provide the full ten feet, and they have done that. Um, I worked pretty closely with the architect to modify some of the geometry on the site um, to accommodate that. After we saw first couple of renditions of the site plan, and so there was some additional setback provided there um, through our discussions. Um, additionally, lot coverage and floor area ratio are not exceeded. And the maximum height of the buildings is met. I would like to point out that height of buildings and include roof decks does include the height of the railings or any furniture. And so the architect has gone to the lengths of measuring to the highest point, and that would be pretty, pretty confidently the highest point regardless of what our um, furniture or uh, railings are installed. Um, so um, the height limit for this particular zoning district has not been exceeded with this proposal. Um, moving on to density, the zone allows twenty-five units per acre for mixed use projects. Um, with that said, the site can accommodate a maximum of twelve density unit equivalents, which is exactly what's being proposed here. So at this table, um, essentially, we have eight three bedroom units. Each of those three bedroom units counts as one and one half density unit. And so eight three bedroom units equates to twelve density unit equivalents. Um, maxing out the density for this particular half acre parcel. Um, the previous lot line adjustment that modified the orientation and the, and the location of the lot lines did create a number of access easements in benefit of the rear parcel. Um, so there's currently a twenty-five foot public easement as well as a thirty foot private easement for ingress and egress to allow access to the property and to exit to public right away. Um, and then with regards to parking, the three bedroom units are each required to provide two garage spaces plus one half space per unit. Um, and so I believe I have a table showing that in a little bit, but essentially this project requires a total of twenty parking spaces. Sixteen of those would be in garages, four would be potentially uncovered, but are guest spaces. In this case, the applicant is proposing to exceed the required amount of parking um, and is providing uh, twenty-four parking spaces as part of this application. And the extra parking spaces that are being provided are all guest parking. There, um, everybody involved here, the units each have two car garages, but um, there will be some additional guest parking that was provided beyond what's required. Um, so this is an image here from the lot line adjustment showing the existing easements. You can see ordering parcel two, parcel one has a thirty foot easement. And then running along the sides of parcel two, you'll see the twenty-five foot access easements to get around the bank. Um, here is the here's the, the table from the staff report regarding parking. And as you can see, they've met the minimum for garage parking spaces and have exceeded the requirements for guest parking or uncovered spaces. Um, yes. And so moving on, this project, because it involves the creation of two or more housing units, is required to contribute to the city's affordable housing fund. Um, and so talking about the applicant, it's, it's going to likely be satisfied by payment of the five percent in lieu um, fee that is based on the overall valuation of the construction for each of the eight units. So essentially, when the building permits are issued for those eight units, the valuation of those, of those units will be used to determine that five percent number. Um, so looking at architecture, um, the buildings proposed are in the modern farmhouse style. Um, for those that aren't aware of the modern farmhouse typically blends traditional farmhouse elements with contemporary designs and colors. In this case, they're um, utilizing a mixture of stucco and horizontal wood siding. They've got an alternating color scheme of blue, white and gray with uh, wooden doors, black windows and trim and uh, great composition shingles. So you can see here the horizontal siding that's shown um, is going, is going to be presented in both the the blue and the gray colors, while the stucco body buildings will all be white. Um, and as I mentioned, the trim color is consistent throughout and the door colors are consistent as well. Um, here's a rendering that was provided by the designer showing perspectives, especially showing the roof decks that are pre-proposed. And so what you can see, I uh, realize that my mouse isn't showing up very well right now, but as you can see on the roof deck, there is the, uh, looking at the left side of the image. Uh, it might be easier to explain on the right side, the right, right-hand row of buildings, but you'll see that there is essentially a floating wall that is at the top of the roof deck. And that it was installed. It's, it's essentially a floating gable, but it was installed there and presented there with the goal of reducing impacts on neighbors. Um, by placing the, the wall. Um, by placing the the walls around the roof deck, it would significantly limit the amount of visibility from neighboring properties. Um, the ability for sounds to travel from this project out to the neighbors and overall um really helps with the the visual impacts that can be had with roof deck. So um, the architect really went to great lengths to try and make these roof decks something that were both usable by the residents, but also not um egregious to the to the neighbors. Um, and so maybe if there's any questions about that, we're happy to happy to address those. I've got one more rendering showing perspective from a different angle. Um, but again, I'm happy to go back over any of this stuff with questions. Um, so landscaping for this development is fairly minimal. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we did hear some comments about that from the ARC, so the designer will be looking at that as they develop their final construction plans, but essentially, each lot has a amount of landscaping between three hundred and twelve hundred square feet. Um, in addition to that, the applicant's proposing to plant uh six palm trees. Um, and predominantly speaking, the the parking areas are bordering the parking areas and the building corners um, along the common driveway. Uh, so as you can see on the planting plan, there's a pretty good amount of planning, percentage-wise, a good amount of planning um, near the guest parking and at the corners of each of the buildings near the garages. At this time, there isn't a whole lot of landscaping shown at the rear lots, the rear of the lots, but uh, as I mentioned, the ARC is suggesting that additional landscaping be provided along those rear walkways that be that are used to access the rear of the buildings. Um, in terms of design guidelines, the municipal code provides considerations for mixed-use projects, predominantly with the goal of um increasing harmony between projects of different land uses. And so in this case, um, the project has made significant steps to reduce impacts on the nearby residents. Um, but we're obviously open to any comments about that. And as I mentioned, specifically with the roof deck and with the additional setbacks provided on the southern property line, the the designer and the applicant have taken steps to reduce the visual and noise impacts to neighbors. Um, I will also point out that the light shielding, the the light standards having been presented here with the architecture, but as part of the building permit review, this that staff will be reviewing to make sure that the lighting standards are compliant with all applicable codes. Kind of flew through that presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission or from the public um, about this project. And thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Uh, do any fellow commissioners have any questions uh about the project for staff? Um, would the applicant like an opportunity to speak on the output project?
Yeah, my name is Matt Cibula. Is it on?
It is, yeah.
Um, I think Patrick's covered it pretty well, so I don't really have anything else to add this time, but open to questions. About the project.
Uh, can I, can I just, this is a very minor question, only because I, as I'm reading the plans, the elevator, tell me about the elevator, because it looks like it's a swing-out door, like.
Yeah, in the garage it is.
In the garage, okay.
Actually, all all those.
All the floors, right?
Yeah.
I've never seen that. How, what is the occupancy of those elevators?
Probably two people at the most.
Okay. Thank you. I just haven't seen that um size and configuration with the swinging open door. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, I think in the elevator itself, there's a sliding door and then there's another door that just goes out, just to seal it up.
I I will say I appreciate the extra parking meeting and then meeting and exceeding requirements for the other things like setbacks height and ingress and egress. Like, those are all things that I would have wanted to address, but don't need to.
Awesome, thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Oh, I was just gonna thank you for your patience tonight.
Oh, yeah.
That's it.
Problem, thank you.
Great, um, I don't have any questions. Excuse me. At this time, I'll open it for a public comment. Uh, this is an invitation for the public to present comments to the commission about this project. Comments should be listened limited to three minutes or less and directed to the commission as a whole. Uh, for those on Zoom who want to provide comment on item A B, please use the raise hand feature or dial star nine. Are there any public comments in the room?
I have uh one question, one comment. The question actually stands on the elevator, whether that's based on size or weight. My thought here is uh could someone in a mobility scooter reasonably reasonably pull in, get up to the floor that they want, all and get out all nice and safely? The comment is uh, I, last time we had something up here, I asked about bike racks. I see a lot of opportunities for bike storage here that don't require an outdoor bike storage simply because they do have the garage. And while a lot of living spaces are upstairs, vitally, there's an elevator available, which makes it a lot easier to get safely upstairs. So uh, as long as the bikes can be stored in the garage, I think uh I'm good on that front.
Great, thank you. Um, maybe I'll um bring the applicant up uh just to address those questions, and maybe if you could just um shed some light on uh the ability of the units to accommodate mobility devices and or bicycles.
Um, I know that elevator is set up for a wheelchair, but a bike, I'm not sure on that. I guess you can pull it in and go vertical with it and hang on to it while you're riding up or down.
Got it, yeah. This looks to be have a substantial garage in each unit, so.
Yeah, plenty of storage there.
Uh, um, great. Uh, are there any um public comments on Zoom?
Uh, none at this time.
Thank you.
Uh, can I just check in real quick? Uh, if any member of the public would like to speak on this, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no speakers on Zoom.
Got it, thank you. So this time I'll close public comment. Um, seeing no more members of the public wanting to provide public comment, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, would the commission like to provide uh comments about the project?
No, thanks. I like the idea of infill, so this one speaks to me. I think this is what we've been asking for, and to have this project come forth, I think is a good thing. So I I'm a fan.
Yeah, I agree. I think this looks like a great project. I'm happy to um to see this move forward. Um, so at this point, I'll uh entertain a motion.
I will move to adopt the prepared resolution approving conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero zero two and tentative track map twenty-two dash zero zero one, and also find that this action is exempt from sequel pursuant to state guidelines section one five three three two for infill.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that. Um, just really quick, this is zero zero. Did I read the wrong one? Wait, no, I'm sorry. You're right. Yes, I second. Sorry.
Yeah. Uh, we have a second. Um, would staff perform a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Sacrament?
Yes.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes. Uh, the motion passes uh three to zero.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. That was great. Take it anytime you want.
Um, we still have one more public hearing item tonight, um, and that is item eight A, right? I'm confusing myself at this point, which is consideration of tentative parcel map twenty-three dash zero zero two, and finding that this action is exempt from review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to state guidelines section one five three one five at one forty-one South Elm Street. Um, do we have a report on this one?
We do. Yeah, thank you, Chairman Avilia. Welcome back and um appreciate the opportunity to present this project as well. Um, so this project is tentative parcel map twenty-three dash zero zero two, located at one forty-one South Elm Street. Um, wanted to highlight, first of all, the interesting geometry of the existing site. Um, you can see it's sort of two rectangles that are connected with a small, small connection. Um, and so um, I think we, if there are questions about sort of the why of how we got to this shape and size of parcel, I I'd love to see if our, if the applicant would like to address those, but um, based on the evidence that we have, it appears that a large reason behind why the shape and size of this parcel even exists today is because of a number of factors, including the existing development on the site, the garage that's in the back portion of the property, as well as the former um configuration of old Grand Avenue, which um, which I found pretty interesting to learn about. Um, so this property also is located within the Gateway Mixed Use Zoning District. Um, and the existing parcel is just under thirteen thousand square feet in size. Um, as I mentioned briefly, and I'll show you in a second, the the property was um largely bisected by a previous old Grand Avenue, as it was called. Um, which was vacated by the city in two thousand and eleven um, as being accessed right-of-way, not needed by the city. Um, and more recently, um, the planning commission actually approved an apartment project at the rear of this property. Um, and that project is very near to construction starting. Um, in between all of that, the garage that I mentioned briefly today also was supposed to be converted to an ADU. And uh, as far as I'm aware, the plans for that project also are approved um with construction. So ultimately, we'd have five apartments in the rear with one ADU, and then assuming everything goes well, the commercial building by itself on the front parcel. So as I mentioned, old Grand Avenue, uh, is a hundred feet wide, and at least the right-of-way was, and uh previously went through where the existing commercial building is on the site. Um, and so happy to answer any questions about that, but um, just wanted to visually show that to this group. Um, the description today is to create one new parcel by splitting it from the existing portion. Um, that would leave us with, if approved, just about a fifty-five hundred square foot parcel with a seventy-five hundred square foot existing parcel, which would be home to Gary Taylor and Associates. Um, might be easy to miss in the plan, so I highlighted it here for you, but this essentially, this highlighted line is all that's being proposed. It's a six-foot-long line, and it would um separate the apartment and the garage from the front portion. Um, and so that is all that's being requested as part of this action today. Um, this project was reviewed by our staff advisory committee early this year. Um, specifically, we talked about items such as the site geometry, common area maintenance, utilities and access. Um, the staff advisory committee during that meeting requested ADA compliant drive approaches and a curb ramp at the corner of Sunset and South Elm, as well as replacement of the onsite parking lot drainage and replacement of damaged sections of sidewalk. Um, getting into some of the purpose behind the Gateway Mixed Use, I I know I just went over this, but it is to provide for a combination of financial institutions, retail offices and commercial uses, as well as multifamily residences with retail and other pedestrian-oriented uses. Um, so this project is um in staff's estimation, consistent with the general plan, specifically the land use elements, um, land use element. Policy number five states that community, commercial, office, residential, and other compatible land uses shall be located in mixed-use areas and corridors, both north and south of the freeway in proximity to major arterial streets. And so Elm Street is an arterial street. Um, and it's very near the Grand Avenue corridor, and so I think this particular project with the proposed commercial uses in the front and the residential uses in the back really meets this um, this policy of our of our land use element. I did want to touch on density. Um, this project is not proposing to add any density, but I just wanted to make everybody feel comfortable that if approved, the new parcel that's created, the smaller of the two, does not exceed allowable density for that zoning district. Um, you may recall that uh the project that was approved at the rear of the site was classified as studio apartments. And so with the studios, each counting as one half of a density unit, this project as approved um contains two and a half density unit equivalents, and it would actually be allowed to be, so depending on if the site would support it, there's still potentially some additional density that allowed here. Um, so I did want to highlight specifically that this project, if approved, does not cause anyone to exceed their allowable density for the parcel. Um, now talking about land division standards, there was a discussion in the staff report asking for the planning commission specifically to weigh in here. Um, the section that's cited here does state that there are exceptions allowed from the minimums here, as long as um, there are special circumstances that exist. Those specifically in the code are called out as being topographical, shape-related, related to the size of the parcel. Um, and so as I mentioned previously, we kind of got to this point based on a number of factors that have evolved over over the years, but um there was a question that we received from one of the commissioners about sort of why is this parcel existing in a size that's less than required? And so I wanted to highlight that, based on our research, it's based on a number of factors uh relating to the existing development and previous roadways. Um, so access for this property will continue to be received um through the shared parking lot, uh, either off of South Elm Street or Sunset Drive. Um, the existing parcels have reciprocal access. Um, and that access and maintenance agreement would need to be updated to allow for the third property owner, but um we have that included in the conditions of approval that are included um for your consideration tonight. And in that shared parking lot, in total, there are thirty-two shared parking spaces. I touched briefly on the fact that the maintenance agreement would need to be updated if this project is approved. Um, so um, just reiterating that. And then I wanted to highlight visually something that might help folks. Um, this particular project is conditioned to replace the curb ramp near the stop sign that you'll see on the left-hand side here, right next to the Gary Taylor Associates building. Um, the city also has identified the opposite corner that you can see on the right-hand side as being a significant um circulation barrier, uh, whatever you want to call it. But uh, so the city is proposing to essentially improve that corner. Um, there's some work that we may need to do at the property owner based on their location of their property and that wall that's there, but it's our full intention to install a curb gutter sidewalk curb ramp in that corner there to facilitate continuous um walkability from Grand Avenue to South on Elm Street, um, continuing south. That's it for my presentation. I'm happy to touch on any of the parts that you might have questions about, uh, and we have the applicant here as well.
Awesome. And great. Commissioner Buchanan, do you have any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions about the um about uh the adjustment here. I do have a bit of a question about the uh street uh maintenance you might be doing there. And not to derail this, but just out of curiosity, I I know, uh, you know, if you're for adjusting uh curb ramps, uh, I believe there was a bill passed last year to require daylighting um around intersections in California with potential uh I think there were potential funding sources to accommodate that, as the city looked into that and as we're doing improvements like that.
Yeah, certainly. Um, our, I haven't been um party to all those discussions. I know that our engineering and public works teams are having those discussions all the time. Um, for instance, they're um applying for a very large betterment grant through um Slocog, that's going to help with uh walkability near parks and things like that. So this is something that's constantly being evaluated. With respect to the daylighting law, we have looked at that from my discussions that I've been a part of, mostly in the village. Um, but it is certainly something our staff is aware of and is planning for.
Got it. Great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Roof?
Oh, I just also wanted to thank you for your patience tonight and um and thanks staff for the presentation, um, both this project and the previous one. I'm just really excited for these projects, and I appreciate all of staff's hard work um to bring these forward and the applicants um work to bring it forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Sacrament?
Um, yes, thank you for the reports. You're thorough as always. Um, the only question I have, well, my first comment is, well, if anything, this split makes these parcels a little more palatable shape-wise. I mean, at least aesthetically for me, looking at it top-down. Um, but we received a, an email um today from a Mr. Ronald Riley, extra from Gary Taylor and Associates, implying that this lot split would afford him, quote, the opportunity and help ensure that the firm stays rooted in Ro Grande. So is that the intent? I guess my question is to the applicant, the intent is to immediately sell to Gary Taylor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I thank you again. Thank you. Big thanks. I know this has been a long night for us all. Um, I think the lot split completely makes sense because it's a bananas lot, obviously. Um, my question actually, I guess it is, I think it should be. Um, the the road improvements, does that mean a sidewalk is going to go all the way? the road improvements, does that mean a sidewalk is going to go all the way down Elm Street right there? Like from that corner down Elm?
That's definitely the goal, I mean, that was one of the sidewalk gaps that we call them, that was identified as being one of the most significant in the city.
Yeah, it's terrible.
There are some issues with what part of that property they, the property owner owns, which part we own. There may need to be some acquisition of right-of-way in order for a full width sidewalk to be installed there, but yeah, that's our intention.
Yeah, and that'd be great, because I, I, I live, I pass that area constantly and that, that intersection in general is just awful, like people almost get hit all the time. But especially that, it's just like this ridiculous gap in a sidewalk that you're like, I have to cross the street and there's nowhere good to cross the street right there, so you're like, it's, it's really weirdly just going to be great and beneficial to actually get a sidewalk in there. Anyway, that was my only question and comment on that one, so that's, that's great news. Um, do we, did I do a public comment yet? No, sorry, it's late. I don't know what this was, but I will take public comment on this item at this point in time.
More of a curiosity question than anything, it looks like the back lot does not have direct street access. Is that going to require an easement to ensure that there's a, uh, path that you can actually get there?
That's a great question, um, I believe that's what the access and maintenance agreement would be, um, to allow those, you know, people into that particular parcel, but please correct me if I'm wrong, staff. That's correct, yeah. Um, is there any other public comment? I guess applicant comment?
Good evening, my name's Jeffrey Amrick, I'm the owner and the applicant for the project. I have to say, I, I'm feeling a little exposed this time. I don't have a hundred people behind me right now. But I, I also feel very special, because I'm the only one tonight, it's gotten four commissioners to listen to my project. So, okay, um, you know, the questions about the street? Um, I've already been looking at it and, um, worked out how to fix our side, which is really a challenge. But I'm also been working with the county, or I mean with the city engineering department on Gary Taylor doing the plans, I'll just do one set of plans all the way down to connect the sidewalk. Um, we've been in contact with the people at that lot and we're working with them to minimize the disruption. The, uh, the sidewalk would be outside of the existing fence, so Elm Street's going to be thinner there than all of Elm Street, but really it amounts to the loss of parking along the street. So we'll be able to put that together and get it fixed. Um, any, any other questions about the, the parcel configuration or why it's like that, it's a wonderful story.
I'm sure it is, and I would love to learn more about it at some particular.
Call me if, uh,
It would be cool to see like an overlay of like where grand used to be, you know, like over where it is now, that would be super cool, but I, I think it's all self-explanatory, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Um, is there, I don't think there was anyone left online, but I can check. Is there any, oh, we do, okay, um, do we have any, anyone online that would like to make public comment on this item?
If anyone online would like to make a comment, please mute, uh, please raise your hand. Madam Chair, there are no raised hands.
Thank you so much, all right, with that, I will close public comment on this item. Um, and we'll welcome any additional comments or questions? No? Nope. Um, I will make a motion to uh, approve the tentative parcel map twenty-three dash zero zero two and find that this action is exempt from review under CEQA. Um, can I have a second, please? Yeah, I'll second, thank you, can I have a vote, please?
Chairman Avilia?
Yes.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Buchanan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sakerson?
Yes.
Thanks, sir.
Approved, thank you so much, thank you for sticking with us, I know it was a long evening for you. Understandably, thank you so much, appreciate it, and I might take you up on the history offer at some point.
That is call me up.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we don't have any, um, non-public hearing items this evening, so I will move on to administrative items, um, is to, do we have any questions or comments from commissioners on the non-administerative, or notice of administrative items? No? Um, do we have any public comment on the administrative items, item ten? None in the room, anyone online?
No, there's no one on Zoom.
Okay, thank you so much, I'll close public comment on that. Um, we don't have to vote, so commission communications, is there any communications from fellow commissioners?
I know it's late, so I'll go really quickly, but I just wanted to thank staff for the um, information on the general plan update, I got the link to go check out the community engagement data that was all put together, and it was really cool to see um, everybody's input, I really enjoyed going through that and getting a sense of how this is coming together, so thank you for, you know, giving us that link, so I could just go in there and click that. And then the, the sheet you held up, um, Commissioner Sakerson, um, that was awesome, um, I did want to ask, um, when I scanned the QR code to do it online, it didn't let you check multiple boxes, like it would only let you do like one. The one where it says check all, so I don't know if we can like fix the online survey, so it could, um, reflect that, but, um, I really appreciate the opportunity to just, you know, pop online and, and fill that out, so thanks so much for that.
Thank you, I agree, the report was fun, I have, have not completely read through it yet, I'm not going to lie, but it was, it's really thorough and great, thank you so much for that. Um, staff communications?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing up the general plan update, that was our only communication this evening, um, we did, we were made aware of the um, issue with that fifth question, and it's been resolved, so you can make multiple selections there. And then, um, as included in that flyer, we are having a, our next workshop on February twenty-eighth at six PM here in the council chambers, uh, with focus on the vision of the general plan update, so a really critical piece that we want as much public engagement as possible, because that's going to be our guiding, our guiding force throughout this, uh, the remainder of the update, so um, we want to solicit as much feedback and input as we can and, um, looking forward to a, a successful and entertaining workshop.
Thank you.
You said February twenty-eighth, six?
Okay, okay, I'm trying to make sure I got it right.
Perfect. All right, um, well, I think that is it? Yes, all right, well then we can adjourn this meeting at ten eighteen. Thank you guys so much for sticking with us.